Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please be seated. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Township of Oldbridge Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting, March 7, 2024. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Oldbridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting, by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the location, the agenda of this meeting, also by mailing such announcement to the home Tribune, filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk, and filing the agenda on the municipal website. Ms. Porcelli, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Ms. Testaverde is not here. Mr. Singh? Chairman Sullivan?
Ms. Testaverde, a member of the board, had a medical appointment, and she's going to be a little late, so we will have another member arriving. I can't speak as to the other two. As a note, the meeting is televised on OBTV Channel 15 here in the township. Simultaneously, this is being recorded for YouTube Live. So if you ever want to see the meeting again, you can look it up on YouTube under Oldbridge Township Zoning Board. If you're going to speak tonight for any reason, I would ask when you approach, there'll be a microphone in public portion. Please talk directly into the microphone, and you'll be asked to give your name and address. The other item would be, everyone here, I'm sure, has a cellphone. If you would please silence that at this point, so we don't interrupt and interfere with the testimony and the capturing of the meeting by recording. All right? Having said that, I'll move on, and we'll move to... The minutes would be first. It's the minutes of February 1, 2024. Board members, hopefully everyone has received that and had a chance to review it. Absent any comments or suggestions for additions or deletions, I'd ask someone to move them for adoption.
Move it, Scogno.
Is there a second?
Izzo.
Ms. Andrews seconds. Roll call, please, Ms. Porcelli.
Ms. Andrews? Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Item four is resolutions. We have one this evening, 60-2022Z, Abilio and Elizabeth Teixeira. It was for a devariance amended.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is for the property known as 2075 English Town Road in Oldbridge. It's block 24204, lot 26. This application was heard on December 7th and January 4th. And we have it on for approval tonight. It's been amended. Copies have been circulated in advance to the board members. If anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to address them. But it is on for memorialization. The conditions are typically the usual conditions that we would see in here, and also that the applicant will return to the board on a bifurcated application within six months from February 15, 2024, for the site plan approval, and any additional new variance relief in the future applications as the applicant deems necessary. This is on for approval tonight. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Clancy. Board members, hopefully everyone has had a chance to reread the amend it, and if so, I'd ask someone, if they feel comfortable, move it for adoption, please.
Izzo?
Is there a second?
Andrews.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Excuse me. Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Under applications, the very first one that's listed is not going to be heard. I'm going to read it into the record. It's 50-2021Z. It's OBNJ LLC. It's in the EDO 1 Zone, Block 1069, Lot 1. Physical location, 69 Highway 35. It's an apartment addition. They're seeking preliminary and final site plan with C and D variance. If you're here in the audience about that matter, it is not going to be heard this evening. They have asked for an adjournment, and then it's going to be adjourned until June 6, 2024. There'll be no further notice. So if that's what you're here for this evening, again, it's 69 Highway 35. That matter has been adjourned. It will be rescheduled June 6. No further notice. Yeah, if you're here, there's another one on here if you're holding an agenda, and it's the last on the agenda this evening. It's 44-2023Z. That's MCB Landscaping. That's low-density residential R20, Block 11257, Lot 4. Location of that is 4244 County Highway 516. That's for a home-based landscaping business requiring devariance. The applicant proposes to operate landscaping business in the rear of the subject property. The applicant owns said property and resides in a single-family house on the property. The application has been adjourned, and the public hearing will be on April 8. If you're here on that matter, there will be no further notice on it. It's not going to be heard this evening. It will be on the agenda April 8. Okay? We'll just give people a moment to walk out. I'm sorry, that's out of the board's power when somebody asks for an adjournment. April 8. Thank you. All right. I'm going to take things out of order a little bit here. I'm going to call 69-2023Z, Candido Carrasco. Someone here? They're not here? Okay. We could actually handle this without them.
I think so.
There wasn't going to be... I'll refresh the board's memory. This was the driveway. Let me call it actually in. 214 Cindy Street Extended Driveway. That's Block 15584, Lot 600, seeking C variance. This was carried from January 18, 2024. There was a denial by the zoning officer. They wanted to legitimize a 12-by-5-by-24 driveway expansion that was done without zoning approval, and it was installed at a zero setback from the side yard where five is required. A board, you remember that, I believe it was a husband and wife that had come in. Apparently, they were unaware of that and said that that was what the contractor told them. We have received information, and I personally saw many of them on that road. Apparently, they have done these type of expansions on their driveway. When that development was first built, it was a single driveway and a single garage, and very few families only have one cars nowadays. So I guess people took it on their own. Unfortunately, you should seek guidance on that if you're going to do that, if you're watching at home. Anytime you would do something, it's a lot safer to just call the zoning, I mean, the building department to find out how you have to properly do that. There may be nothing that you have to do, but then there may be something. In this case, there should have been something. As a result of that, the board asked them to leave that night and continue. It was a suggestion that they go home, think about what they want to do. Are they going to mitigate it by cutting five foot off the driveway? Or are they going to cut something off the driveway? In support of the application, the neighbor who would be affected on the zero setback on the property line spoke on behalf of it, that he had been a good neighbor, he was aware of it, and he had no problem with it. As a matter of fact, they had spoke about it. Other than that, he said that there would be no... There could be no runoff, and that's one of the issues that zero setbacks create, because what happens when you have an imperious surface such as asphalt, it makes the water go somewhere. And we can't allow water by ordinance. You can't have the water going on someone else's lot. In this case, his lot was higher and built up, so once again, we invited them to go back. As a result of that, however, on February 15, a memo was authored by Venus One, the township planner, and the subject is 214 Cindy. Basically, I don't... I can read the whole thing. It's not too long. "At a public hearing dated January 18, for the above-mentioned application, the board raised concerns with the existing and proposed zero-foot driveway setback from side property line on subject property. In order to help the board make an informed decision on the matter, the planning and zoning office conducted a review of the relevant ordinance section and neighborhood. We also had the engineering office review the proposal. The subject property is located at 214 Cindy Street, Block 15584, Lot 600, and located fully within the R6 zone. Pursuant to Article X Design Standards Section 250-77A2A, off-street parking spaces, together with appropriate access thereto, shall be provided on the same lot as the building is intended to serve. Parking facilities may be located in any yard space, except where specifically prohibited, but shall never be closer than five feet from any side yard or rear yard property line. Any deviation from this section of the land development ordinance requires a design waiver and not a variance. The zoning board of adjustment has the authority to review such design waivers and grant if deemed appropriate. This application is to legitimize an existing driveway 12-foot, 5-inch by 24-foot. That was constructed without permits with a zero-foot setback. In the case of a driveway, two primary reasons for requiring a setback are to provide privacy to neighbors and accommodate stormwater runoff and/or to alleviate any drainage concerns. A setback from a driveway creates a pervious surface between the property line and the driveway that allows for natural absorption of water in most instances. However, this is not the only design option. Above regulation appears to be more apt for non-residential developments than single-family homes as it is included under off-street parking and loading, which mostly applies to non-residential developments. Since the section does not specifically call for non-residential developments, it's been uniformly applied to both residential and non-residential developments. In the case of residential lots, it is somewhat impractical to require a five-foot setback for driveways, especially for smaller lots. We note that the zoning board has recently received numerous other applications with similar requests, and upon review and recommendations of the zoning officer, the board has granted such design waivers. Knowing the volume of applications received with similar requests, one of the recommendations to the Township Council with the 2023 annual report shall be to revisit the above-mentioned section of the ordinance and make exceptions for smaller residential lots, or when driveway design has been approved by the engineering office. Upon site visit, we noticed that there were several other properties within the neighborhood with zero-foot setback from driveways. See a figure below which appears on this memo. The engineering office has reviewed the application and does have, I assume, does not have any objection to this driveway being extended to the property line. Although a grading plan is unavailable, based on the site visit, it appears that there will not be any potential damage, drainage issues on the property or the neighboring property. Additionally, in the past, there have been no drainage concerns from the area or neighborhood as confirmed by our engineering office. The neighbor was also present at the meeting and testified in support of the application. The proposed deviation will not substantially impair the zone plan, or its intent in the granting of the waiver will not have any negative impacts on the neighborhood. As shown above in the figure, there are numerous other properties within the neighborhood that have similar driveways. The proposed design, therefore, is consistent with the homes within the neighborhood. The design of the driveway limits the discharge of stormwater runoff within the property only, thereby creating no negative impacts." Please feel free to reach out to me with any additional questions. So, board members, I'm sure everybody had a chance to read that. I wanted to read it into the record for the public, those who may have issues of this on their own. This would not require a variance, but a design waiver. So we could have a conference on that, if you would like to talk about that. I'll ask Mr. ... Yeah. I would ask Mr. Clancy to advise us on that, what we did and what we should now do. Because we didn't take an action, we asked them to go home and look at it. So if... They don't have to be here, obviously, for this to occur, but the board could consult on how we should handle this, correct, and either issue the design waiver or not.
Yeah. There was an application that was started. There was testimony that was put forth. I believe we're coming up on the time limit on this as well. I'm going to get this... I believe... One of the reasons why it's on for tonight, I believe, is that March 12, if I'm not mistaken, is when this is due. So action one way or another should be taken by the board, otherwise it becomes a default.
Board members, any comments? On my left? None? Roseanne, Ms. Andrews, go ahead.
Yeah, how does this affect the survey and when you go to sell the house?
Your property line goes through the property line.
Will there be anything?
I don't know how that goes with title companies. I don't know whether they want to insure for that. But I can't speak to that. We did say that, and that would be an issue, but...
Yeah, I mean, I don't believe we required them to submit a survey for this. Usually, we don't for something along these lines, when it's somebody from the township just coming in as a resident, making these applications. But if the house goes to get sold, obviously, the title company would require a survey. If the survey found there was some sort of deficiency there, it would have to be, it wouldn't clear title for them. So the onus stays on the owner of the property to either correct it at that point in time, or, you know, if it's there for a very long time, it technically could be, you know, it could be adverse possession or something like that.
It's up to them to, if they're selling it, if there's a problem, they have to fix the problem before they can sell.
Yeah, to comply with the title company, with title company's requirements, which they're always kind of required to clear title before they close on the property to make sure the lot is...
Nothing affecting the town?
No, it should not be affecting the town.
Yeah, would not come back to us.
Because we're not authorizing them to go... If the board were to act favorably on it, they wouldn't be authorizing, obviously, expansion over the line, only authorizing up to the line. It's onus is on him to make sure he's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So it would just be a plurality vote for whether we would authorize a design waiver, right?
Correct.
Or grant a design waiver, I should say.
Correct.
Anyone interested in moving a design waiver, approving a design waiver for this property?
Andrews, I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Izzo?
Moved in second. Roll call for the waiver.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. The next up would be Extra Space Management. Mr. Wicascala?
Yeah, hi, Chairman. John Wicascala. It's great to see you, the board, tonight.
You might want to sit, Mr. Wicascala. It's not picking you up.
There we go. So again, John Wicascala. Good to see everyone. I'm here tonight on behalf of Extra Space Storage. This is, tonight was supposed to be the continuation of our hearing. Or may recall, we started, actually started and finished with all of our testimony at the February meeting. We had a transcript prepared of those proceedings, which have been provided to the board, and I was here tonight, or I am here tonight, to really just provide kind of a summary and a closing statement and board deliberation and vote. I am aware that, at least at the moment, there are only five board members.
I'm going to give you some good news before you waste too many more words. The other member is on Route 9 and should be here momentarily.
Okay.
My suggestion is that we'll take a quick recess. We'll reconvene, and we'll put you on. Then we can move on with the other agenda for All-American Ford, which would be the only other option.
Very good.
That's okay with you, Mr. Klaas? We can take a little break?
I appreciate your patience, everybody.
All right. For those at home, we're going to take a quick recess while we wait for our other member to arrive in the building. We'll be back soon.
Ms. Porcelli, could I have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Ms. Andrews?
Here.
Ms. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Ms. Testaverde?
Here.
Mr. Singh?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan?
Here. I thank the two attorneys for their deference in allowing us a brief recess. So we'll continue back on with the agenda. Fifty-two dash twenty twenty-three Z, Extra Space Management. This is CR Zone Block Four One Eight Five Lot One. Physical location's one thousand one US Highway Nine, Old Bridge. It's for self-storage. Major preliminary final site plan with D variants. John Wicca Scala Esquire representing the applicant. Sir?
Hi, good evening, everyone. John Wicca Scala, on behalf of Extra Space Management, Inc., it's my pleasure to be back before the board this evening. We are before you seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval, as the chairman indicated, with both D and C variants relief to permit the development of a second three-story climate-controlled self-storage building on this property. This is a continuation of the hearing that started back on February first. We actually presented our entire case that evening. The board may recall, we did not have a court reporter here that evening, though the proceedings, a mistake we have not made this evening. So I'm happy to report. But we were permitted to proceed because you do simulcast on YouTube and we were able to have a court reporter prepare a very comprehensive verbatim transcript, and that's been provided to the board. So on February first, the public hearing was closed. It was agreed I'd come back this evening, provide kind of a summary of the application, a closing statement, and then it's up for board deliberation and consideration. By way of background and reminder, subject property is about six point three acres in size. It's currently developed with a three-story, approximately one hundred two thousand three hundred fifteen square foot climate-controlled self-storage building with associated improvements. There is an outdoor storage area and some outdoor structures as well. The existing building improvements that you see out there today, the building itself, was actually approved by this zoning board back in nineteen ninety-eight. Those approvals were later amended in two thousand one. Project was constructed shortly thereafter. It was originally a Storage USA and then Extra Space acquired Storage USA. So they've been operating this facility for about eighteen years now. Again, we are seeking preliminary and final site plan approval. The new proposed building is similar to the existing building. It's three stories in height, and it's approximately seventy-two thousand nine hundred square feet. It actually has a building footprint of twenty-four thousand one hundred seventy-seven square feet. And again, we're seeking, part of the application, we're seeking validation and approval of the existing outdoor storage units that are within that outdoor storage area. The new building is proposed on the West Hurley side of the property, closer to the Route Nine ramp. It's actually on the opposite side of the property from where the residential apartment community is located. You may recall our engineer testifying that that existing building actually provides a visual buffer for the residents to that new building. Self-storage is permitted as a conditional use in your CR Zone District. However, we don't meet all of the conditional use criteria. And while it was approved, the existing building was approved by this board, there were some modifications to the zoning ordinance over time. The result of that is our application does include a D-two, D-three, D-four, and D-six variants, and that relates to the expansion of a non-conforming use, the conditional use criteria, FAR variants, and the D-six variants as to height and the additional bulk variants relief. You did hear the testimony from our project engineer last month, Matt Kunsman. He provided detailed testimony regarding the existing site, the existing conditions, and then all aspects of the proposed development, including site location, access, which really isn't changing, building coverage, the floor area ratio, the lighting, the landscaping, the signage for the project, and stormwater management improvements. Mr. Kunsman noted through the exhibits presented that we are going to be proposing a minor realignment of Malletta Way. That's really just to enhance circulation through the site. And he also noted that there are no changes to the business operations. Our hours of operation are going to remain the same. Our number of employees, two, that would be manning the office, serving both buildings, would remain the same. Over the course of Mr. Kunsman's testimony, we did go through all the review reports from your board professionals and really agreed to comply with all of the technical review comments, or some of them were comments that we just need to work with the professionals on items like landscaping and the like. We did agree, and the transcript bears out to a number of conditions, a lot of them where we're going to do all the stormwater comments, et cetera. I did go back through, just to hit on some of the highlights anyway, as the board considers the application. One of the conditions that we agreed to is to provide a cross-access easement over Malletta Way. Of course, so long as our neighbors, we have a willing neighbor to work with. And of course, any such access agreement would be subject to the review and approval of your attorney. As I indicated, we're going to amend the plans. We had an exhibit that showed it, but that realignment of Malletta Way to provide for better circulation. We're going to work with your board professionals to enhance the landscape areas. We actually had a revised landscape plan. Your planner pointed out that there were also some areas where it looks like trucks over time may have run over shrubs and so forth. So we're going to just work with your professionals in those areas and candidly anywhere to address any additional landscaping and buffering comments. We are going to remill and repave Malletta Way as well. Somebody noted that, I think they felt like their axle was going to break off driving through that area, so that's one item. There was a fence gap noted somewhere on the site. I forget exactly where. We're going to make sure we close that up. It was really just an oversight by our engineers. We're going to modify the stormwater management, O and M manual, the operations and maintenance manual, to address comments. And I believe we're typically accustomed to recording that document, so it becomes a document and an obligation in perpetuity on the deeds for the property. We did receive comments from the fire marshal. We actually reached an agreement with the fire marshal on all of the items he had identified. They were items, you know, additional hydrants, modifications to fire lane striping, Knox box, those things. And there's also a, he had recommended that in, assuming it's approved in the post-approval condition, we would do testing to make sure that the emergency broadcasting or radio equipment is sufficient, and if a booster is necessary as a result of it, we would provide that too. Those are really just a highlight of the ones that I picked up from going through the transcript. There may be more in there, but I just wanted to point those out. You heard from our traffic engineer, Paul Gowing. He went through the traffic testimony, spoke to the low-intensity nature of this use and really the low-traffic generation that's associated with self-storage, which was one of the reasons and really part of the justification overall for why we can have a project such as this, why we can have floor area ratio variance relief, because it is such a low-intensity use from a traffic generation perspective. And he also spoke to the parking variants we have and demonstrated that we have sufficient parking for this type of use. Our project architect went through, Rich Benzavenga. He provided overview of the elevations and the floor plans, the building signage, lighting. I know the board members had a number of questions. I believe it was actually well-received, looking back through the transcript. Somebody made a reference to the Jetsons relative to the building, but, you know, I think he addressed all the board's questions. And finally, you heard the testimony of our project planner, probably the most important witness, addressing the nature and extent of the variance relief. Christine Caphone was our planner. I certainly believe her to be one of the preeminent planners in the state. And Ms. Caphone went through all of the requested variances, the D variances, the C variances. She determined and concluded in her testimony that where necessary, we meet both the positive and the negative criteria associated with those variances, basically that the variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, that the benefits outweigh any perceived detriments. She believed that these variances could be granted without impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinances of Old Bridge. So, you know, overall, we think this is a great project for Old Bridge. My client is a longstanding member of this business community. It's an opportunity for them to expand their business at this particular location without having any deleterious impact, no impact on municipal services, no traffic impacts. And we think aesthetically, it's a nice building and a nice addition here to the community. And we would hope with that that the board would find fit to grant approval. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, although the hearing is technically closed. But if anybody has questions, concerns, I'm here to listen.
Thank you, Mr. Wicca Scala. Board members, if you do have a legal-type question, there is not going to be any other testimony tonight. The record is closed. However, feel free to ask a question if it concerns something that you have in your mind or you're not certain about. I'll start on my left if there's anything. No? On my right? Okay. Having said that, you're resting, correct?
I am resting, Chairman.
Okay, board members, I'll invite everybody to make any comments if they want. I'll make my own first. This was an interesting application. I want to thank you and your professionals for the presentation that you made to us. The building, I believe, was first approved, as we were told, in nineteen ninety-seven. I think your corporation that you're representing took over in two thousand or?
Yeah, I believe it was two thousand five.
Two thousand and five. So we know the existence has been there for a long time, so that approval was granted. We know it's existed for a long time, and apparently it's done rather well in its business, because otherwise I don't think they'd be asking for an expansion. But I think that speaks to the times, and I think that speaks to younger generation, more transient living style than occupying a home. That's why there's such a need for these storage places. And if you travel around the state at all, which I get a lot of chance to do, they're going up all over. And you were previously here and represented one, as a matter of fact. And I know that these are important to people, because when you have an apartment, you've got a lot of stuff to store. And once again, I don't think the corporation would be investing money in it. I was happy to hear the presentation, and when I, you had four witnesses, and you briefly spoke about them, and I was going to do the same thing in the sense that the engineer, each one of them walked us around that project in really a great manner, and it was very easy for me to understand, and I think it was very easy to the board to understand. And I think each one of them had a little piece of the quilt that they were sewing. And the, starting with the engineer, of course, with the actual build, and then, of course, the traffic engineer adding his piece of the quilt, and finally, the architect doing his. But I was really impressed when it was all wrapped up and it was woven together by the professional planner, and I think she made that very easy to understand. She went and took the time to talk about the D-two, the D-three, the D-four, the D-six. And we normally don't have applications in front of us when you have four out of six. So I don't know that we'd ever have six out of six, but I hope not. But four out of six is pretty big. But I think everybody understands them. Most of the people who've been sitting here understand these types of commercial builds. Personally, I think the site is suitable. The proposed use, I think, serves the general welfare of the community. I think it can be granted without substantial negative detriment to the public good or the zone plan. I really don't have anything negative to say about this, other than I'm glad that it's going to mirror image, which I think is more important. I asked a question, I recall, on direct testimony. Well, I see a big difference in this when I ride by, and you say, unless you really looked at the building and studied it, you wouldn't know that it's almost doubled in size. So I think it's good for the community. I think it's a need for the community, and I think it's the right place to have it done. So I will stand in support of it. Of course, this has to go to a vote, as you very well know. I'll start on my left if anybody has any comments.
No.
On my right? Mr. Clancy, any comments or questions?
No, looks like we have D-two.
Well, we have D-two, three, four, and six, which we would have to start with individually.
Yep.
And then I believe there are Cs, bulks?
There are bulks.
And I believe you have two design waivers, right?
I think that is correct, yes.
So on bulk, I have the seventy-five-foot buffer, where thirty-four point two is proposed. We've got a landscape area ratio, forty percent, where thirty-seven point eight eight percent is proposed. There's a pre-existing non-conforming, which we should include. It's a fifty-foot buffer along the residential area. It's at twenty-two five. There's no change proposed for that, but we should include it to legitimize it. Fifteen percent of the facade of the storefront, so they're installing a seventy-three point five eight square facade sign on the building and a one hundred eighty-seven point eight two square foot facade side on the rear of the building. Does that mirror what's already there?
Well, this is the new, this is the new building, so, yeah. This is the new wall signage. We also had sign on the east facade of five point eight square feet, and actually two on that north facade.
Oh, yeah, it's actually, that's the next one coming up on here, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We're also installing two five point eight square foot loading signs on the east facade of the building. Underneath that, we have a three point nine seven square foot office facade sign. That's going to require variance relief. And then we have two design waivers. It looks like the, for the lighting, for lowest foot candle value at any point, not to be less than one-third of the average value. And here we have lighting that produces point zero percent foot candles, where one point four foot candles is actually required. And the other waiver is for loading space dimension. Ten by sixteen with fifteen-foot clearance is what is required, and they're recommending, or they're proposing twenty by twenty. I think that, I just took that out of, I took that out of the engineer's memo.
Correct.
So I think we're all on the same page with that, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And just, and I would just make note, because we did speak to the front yard setbacks, off-street parking, lot coverage, et cetera. Those actually were part of the D-three, because those are conditional use standards. A lot of times, we just deal with them as additional bulk variances, but they're within the use area. And the only other one, I'm not sure, we, minimum loading size, ten by sixty required, twenty by twenty.
Yeah, that was the last one.
I wasn't sure.
Design waiver, right?
Yeah. I listed it in the notice as a variance, just to be careful.
Two design waivers, right?
There's the two, the last two ones that I read, yeah, for the foot candle issue and the minimum dimensions on the loading spaces.
All right, that leaves us with starting to take a vote. It would have to be, we'd start at the number D-two. That's expansion of a non-conforming use. Someone interested in moving that for approval?
Starting.
Ms. Testaverde, is there a second?
Izzo.
Mr. Izzo, roll call as to D-two.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. D-three, conditional use. Is there a second? Andrews seconds. Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. D-four, floor area ratio.
Andrews move it.
Andrews moves it.
Second, Scogno.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. D-six, height variance.
Izzo? Move it.
Andrews seconds. Izzo moves. Roll call.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Mr. Clancy, can I take the Cs as one bulk?
Yeah, we've already read them to the record, unless the board has any questions as to what we're voting on.
We'll do them as one vote on all the Cs.
Bulk and the design waivers, I guess.
Can we include the design waivers or have them separate?
I don't think they need to be separate.
You don't care? They'll all be together. Someone want to move them?
Testaverde, move it.
Second, is there a second?
Izzo?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Now we have major preliminary and final site, we have to separate those two. Mr. Clancy, major preliminary. I'll move it. Is there a second?
Izzo?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Final site plan. Once again, I'll move it.
Izzo?
Moves, Izzo seconds. Roll call.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it. We'll have a transcript prepared. We'll submit it, get a copy to your office as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that, yeah.
Thank you again for your appearance, Mr. Wicca Scala.
Thank you. Great seeing everybody. Appreciate it.
Can we hold in place on this, or do you want a five-minute break? One and a half minutes? We'll stay in, we'll stay here while the stenographer needs to change something. In the meantime, I guess, good night. The next application can come up to the table, and we'll just wait for the stenographer to be ready before we read anything in. I think there was two minutes. Only kidding, it was a minute and a half. This is the final application for this evening. It's fifty dash twenty twenty-three Z, All American Ford, that's located in the EDO Three Economic Development Opportunity Zone, Block One Six Zero Zero Zero, lots four, six, eleven, and fifteen point, I'm sorry, six point eleven and fifteen point eleven. Location sixty-one Old Amboy Road Automobile Storage and Service Center. Seeking major preliminary final site plan with a D variants. Applicant proposes to construct a motor vehicle service building consisting of approximately thirteen thousand seven hundred and forty-two square feet, as well as the construction of a parking field consisting of three hundred eighty-two spaces for vehicles. Peter Clausar representing the applicant. Mr. Clausar?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Peter Clausar with the firm Hilebrand Pape, on behalf of All American Ford. This evening, I have the pleasure of representing All American with regard to their application, which you described, Mr. Chair. It is a preliminary and final site plan approval. There's some bulk variance and waiver relief, which we'll go through. And there is D-relief. It's D-three relief. This is a conditionally permitted use in the zone, so it is a use that's contemplated for the zone. There are seven different conditions in your ordinance. We meet all of those conditions with the exception of one. There is another deviation, which, after going over it with my engineer, we can actually eliminate. So the only condition that we do not meet is a pre-existing condition for a parking lot buffer to Old Amboy Road that is there, and was actually approved by the board previously back in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. My partner, Ken Pape, got the parking lot approved on Lot Six Point One One, which is on the plans, and at that time, the relief was granted for that buffer violation. The second one, which we're able to eliminate, is interior on Lot Four. There is a parking area and a bit of retaining wall that actually encroaches into a setback. But after, like I said, after talking to the engineer, he said, I'm not sure how I ended up having that four-foot difference. I can get rid of it. I said, great, get rid of it. So the, what is proposed by the applicant, aside from the existing buffer, which is there and is not going anywhere and has nothing to do with this application, is completely permitted under your ordinance and as proposed. There are a few bulk variances, which we'll talk about, but they don't relate to the conditions of the variance relief. It's very important for me to say this, because you're a zoning board. The reason why we're here is because we need that D-three relief. But the focus of that relief that you're granting has to be on the buffer that's pre-existing in the zone, not the use that's coming in. The use that's coming in is conditionally permitted with that one exception. Lot Four is a lot that we are a contract purchaser for. That is a lot that has a little bit of trouble in your zoning department. There's been some violations on it. There might be a little bit of a contractor's yard out there that doesn't belong. So I get to be in the position where I didn't do it, we didn't own it, but I get to come in and get rid of it and eliminate that use. So we're under a contract to buy that lot. That contract is contingent upon approvals granted by this board. Lot Six Point One One, which is the lot where the building is proposed, is owned by All American. Lot Fifteen Eleven, which is on Old Amboy Road, is leased by All American from Tower Realty. So those are your three lots and your three owners. Stephen Holce is the owner of Lot Four. So the applicant is proposing a service center. The service center itself is what is the conditionally permitted use. Car dealerships, new car dealerships are also conditionally permitted uses, but the dealership is not the subject of this application this evening. I have five witnesses. Rich Savino, who's with me, is the owner of All American Ford, and he's going to talk to the board a little bit about the operation and how it's laid out and how it's going to work. Because the lot that we're proposing for storage is for service vehicles, not for new car storage. And the lot that we're proposing and the service center that we're proposing has no public, has no customers that come to it. All of the interface will continue to be as it is now on the dealership lot. That doesn't change. Only employees will be coming back to this lot. And there's no storage of parts inside of the service building. The part storage stays on the dealership side. So when a part is needed, it will come back to this lot by, the employees will be brought back there. So it's important to understand those things, and Rich will testify as to all of those. Then we have Scott Turner, who is the applicant's engineer. He's designed the site for us. And Scott, actually, before we came in front of this board, because, as the board may recall from the prior applications, there are wetlands back there. We went to the DEP, and we actually got delineations before we even came here. So we're not guessing. We know where lines are. So that's significant. And then we have Ed Essay, who's the architect. When you have a dealership like this, your architect, your owner of the dealership, work closely with Ford. Ford has a brand, and they want particular architecture, so we've gotten that. We've gotten those approvals, and the building is designed in a way that it will be constructed in the way that you're shown. I have Scott Kennel here to discuss traffic and the impacts of the proposed use. But as you heard, this is not a place where public is going. And then lastly, we have Mark Remsa, who's the applicant's professional planner, and he'll provide you with the testimony that I think is necessary for you to grant the variance relief that's requested. So if I could, I'd like to start with Rich, have him sworn, and then just state on the record his relationship to the applicant, and then we'll take you through the operation on the site. And while we do that, if we could bring up the overall aerial, because I think it'll be helpful for pointing and poking.
Mr. Clancy?
Um...
Mr. Savino?
We're going to swear you in.
Okay.
Okay? You'd raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that any testimony? Do you solemnly swear that any testimony you provide before the board will be the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you can put your hand down. Just state your full name for the record, please.
Sure. Richard Savino, S-A-V-I-N-O.
Thank you, Mr. Savino.[1727.54]
Rich, what's your relationship to All American Ford?
I'm one of the owners. One of the owners there, I'm sorry.
Let's stay in the microphone.
I'm trying.
Okay. So, Rich, we have the dealership, the proposed building, and the proposed parking lot. Tell the board how it's all going to work, how it's supposed to work.
Can I do it on that board there?
You certainly can.
We'll get your portable mic. Do we have a portable?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have a pointer, so it's easier. Would the board rather see it from there or behind you?
Yeah, for the public's best interest. Why don't you just use the pointer and sit there?
Sure.
Rich is recovering from knee surgery.
I don't have the lot numbers memorized, so I'll just go by simplistic. This is the dealership, okay? This area here is the service write-up. This parking lot here is existing, and I think Peter mentioned that's owned by Tower Realty. We own this piece of property, which is where we're going to propose to put the building. And this is the lot that we are under contract for or trying to get under contract to purchase. The utilization of this building is for service only. There'll be no customers there. There'll only be employees. There's no parts delivery, there's no vehicle delivery. Everything happens over here on the existing piece of property. So as the customers come and get written up in this area, we will move the vehicles over here and into the new piece of property, and they'll be serviced over here. And again, it's a minimal amount of employees, maybe six to 10 employees tops there. And again, there's nobody from the public that's permitted in that property. Everything happens over here. And as the service vehicles are repaired, they'll go into this lot over here. Again, emphasize that there is no deliveries here, no parts deliveries here, no vehicle deliveries here. And everything will happen out of the main building as it does today.
And just to clarify, the lot where the service building is proposed, I know you didn't memorize the lot numbers, but I did.
Write that here.
Is six, no, where the service building is proposed is Lot 6.11, and it has a parking area surrounding it.
Right.
And then Lot 4 in the back is the lot that you are under contract to purchase.
Okay.
That has a parking field proposed.
Right.
Those two parking fields will be occupied solely by service vehicles, correct?
Well, this one will be. This is existing new car inventory that'll remain there. There's not much space there, but we could have new cars there, but not in the new property.
And Lot 1511, which is the front lot, is new car storage.
Which is which one you're talking about?
That's right on Amboy Road, Old Amboy Road.
Got it.
Tower Realities lot.
This one here?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Not good with the numbers, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
Mr. Klausner, would you just have him point out where Route 9, Route and Amboy Road are, and then probably to the very north, is that the property of the Elks Lodge?
It's not in there, it's on this side.
Yeah.
And then Route 9 is right out there in front of the dealership.
I just want everybody to understand where.
It runs pretty quickly into Route 18 right there.
Thank you.
So that's the layout, that's the proposal. There were a few items that we needed to get on the record, that this was an employee-only area, employee parking-only area. There's no public parking. It's relevant to some of the conditional use standards, but we do comply with them. And that this would be storage for these, the service vehicles on that Lot 4. So Rich is available to answer any questions, and I'll make sure that he's available for when the public speaks, so that he can answer any of those questions as well.
Thank you.
Go to the professionals first, if they have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Darje?
Just a few questions as far as just clarification of the operation, as I understand it. So customers will come, drop their vehicle at the main building. That's where they'll get checked in and all that. And then, from that point, a service employee will take their vehicle across the road, across Amboy Road, and park it in the storage lot. And it'll be worked on, and then it stays there after it's been worked on until the customer comes, again, back to the main building, says, "I'm here for my car." And then an employee goes, runs, gets the car, brings it back for them to take again from the main building.
Correct. Just one thing I want to add to that, it's very low volume. This building here, this is all service here, this is service here, and this is all service at that end. So from a volume standpoint, it's minimal. I would say less than 15%, 20% of the people will actually be serviced in this building.
So there...
But you are correct. What'll happen is, this is a drive-through, which from an aerial shot, you can't tell. And they'll drive in, they're all written up there, like you said, all the documents, all the paperwork. And the minimal number of vehicles that come over here will be driven by my employees and put in that lot.
So I think...
And after they're worked on, they go here. And we have valet service, so when the customer comes to pick up their car here, our valet will go get it and bring it. The customers do not go into the lot.
I think that explanation actually helped to answer my next question, because the number of spaces seems like a heck of a lot of spaces, right? 382 just on Lot 4 alone. So I was wondering why that small service building would require such a huge parking lot for vehicles. But you're saying you already have service facilities on the main lot that are going to continue to operate, so that's why you need such a large service storage lot.
Well, we're also, because of this building, this has all been service parking in here.
Right.
All along. So with that size building and, you know, the right away and all...
You're taking up some of those spaces, I get it.
We need the spaces over there for that, and, you know, to move some of the product over there.
Okay. And you estimate about 15% to 20% of your actual service vehicles, service will be done at that building, so the amount of...
Yes, yes.
Okay. But you still have, I guess, the cars that get serviced at the main building, would they also be parked on this site, because it's such a large lot?
Possibly, not all of them, though.
Because I guess the question, you know, that answers the question as far as the size of the lot, that sort of satisfies that curiosity, I guess. But then the other question becomes the amount of vehicles that you're going to be crossing across that road, and what's that traffic look like? I guess, would your engineer be speaking to that?
I'm not sure whether or not, but I can answer the question. Remember, this is all service parking now without the building, and so is this. So the volume that's already coming over here will only be increased roughly 10% to 15%. And the only difference with the building is, instead of parking service there, they'll put them over there.
Okay, so the 10% to 15% is really, that's how much is going to increase?
As far as traffic goes, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions.
So what?
So the larger parking area, right? It will be meant for only vehicles that are serviced and are waiting to be picked up, or there will be new inventory that is stored there, too?
No, there won't be any new inventory. It'll just strictly be vehicles that are in for service, waiting to come in a shop, completed and outside the shop.
But then, for that purpose, isn't that a lot of parking? Unless you're anticipating that you will be servicing those many vehicles? Because from what I hear is the front parking lot, right? And the one surrounding that service building is already being used for vehicles that have been serviced in the main facility, right?
Right, yes.
If there is 10% to 15% increase, for that 10% to 15% increase, do you really need that huge parking lot, is the question? There's something missing.
Well, Rich...
Oh, yes, the answer to that question is yes, I need that lot. If you see this lot here, this is where service vehicles have been parked, and this whole area over here. So if you, just mathematically or by your eye, you'll see that this isn't as large as these two. So yes, I need that parking now.
No, I mean, my question is, if you're testifying that the net increase in the vehicles that are going to be serviced is 15% to 20%, then whatever is being used so far is being used so far, that's existing. For that 15% to 20% increase, do you need that big a parking lot? Or there will be other vehicles, too, that will be stored on that parking lot? Because one thing I know is, there are a lot of cars parked on either side of Old Amboy Road. Does that mean that those that are parked on the street will go into this parking lot? Or is there some other use? Because otherwise, just for the 15% to 20% increase, it doesn't make sense.
No, but...
Well, no, what's, you have to, I want you to understand that, right now, this area is used for service parking, and so is this area. We want to utilize that to put on new and used inventory there to sell.
That explains it.
So I'll be able to move these cars, these cars, these cars, and here onto that new property.
Now it makes sense.
I was trying to get to that. But yeah, but that's the idea. All of the area that's really for new car storage is currently being occupied by service. You want to shift it to that back lot. Not all of it, but a vast majority of it.
Because I find it a little challenging that, you know, patrons are coming to the main facility, dropping off the car. A valet is then taking it across the street, because it's not like there are four or five vehicles that are going to be clubbed together and are moved. It's like every individual trip that will be back and forth from being, so a patron coming to the service center, an employee taking their car, driving across the Old Amboy Road into this new parking lot, and then, once it's ready, it's coming back. There will be a lot of back and forth between vehicles. And how does that impact traffic or circulation within that area?
Well, again, that's happening today. All the vehicles that are written up here are taken across the street here or here. So we're going across Amboy Road already. The extra volume could be maybe 10% more.
But I mean, we all know that there have been issues on Old Amboy Road, right? With the parking and the traffic. So I'm just trying to understand if there was a better solution to it? Because in theory, although this service center is completely accessory to your principal use or the principal facility, in reality, by definition, it's not an accessory.
It stands on its own, and it's a...
Correct. And so I'm sure you want to defend it that way, too. So then, why have patrons go to the main facility and do the, and have employees do back and forth? It's just a question.
But it happens now. Even if we park a service car here or here, our employees have to come get it. The customers do not come in this lot, they do not come here, and they do not come for their service vehicles. It's just a courtesy that all the vehicles are picked up, are driven across the street by our employees and delivered to the customers. The customers pick up their cars around here. So this here is a wash bay, so we wash all the service customers. So we are moving on the property and across the street already. So there is movement. The difference is, this is minimal addition to that. But what it does is, it frees this lot up, frees here up, frees that up, and where we put the building to utilize that. So yes, we do need that. As a matter of fact, when the engineers, when we first were interested in the property, before we got into having to have water sheds and things, we were looking at 450 spots. So we're down, I think, to 350. So we need every one of those spots.
So I guess to, and maybe, because I think I kind of understand what your testimony is, so to maybe answer what Ms. Savon's question was regarding, why don't we have customers come to this facility directly rather than having them come check in? Is it your operation where maybe your employees sort of decide, depending on the type of service that's being performed, that who goes where?
As far as what, where the car goes?
As far as the cars, like...
That'll be determined by the...
It's not predetermined, like the customers don't know, "Hey, I got to go to the building in the back today." It's basically your employees determine whether they're going to go to some facility in the front, or whether it has to go to this new facility in the back. So that's sort of why the customers, it's not predetermined where the customers have to go.
Right. Well, it depends on what jobs are needed.
Right, that's what I mean.
And where the right techs are.
It's determined by, you know, your employees, not the customer.
Internally, yes. Actually, a dispatcher, but yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And then as far as the actual numbers of vehicles, is that something Mr. Kennel will be testifying to? Mr. Klausner?
He will certainly be providing traffic testimony and the impact of this proposed development.
Okay, so we'll hold off on questions about specific numbers of trips back and forth and all that?
Sure.
To that point? Okay.
Mr. Chetrel?
Yeah, the one question was, and I guess that will be answered by the engineer, is the actual number. I know we're going up 10%, 15%, 20% from what it is now. But what is it now? That's, you know, how many cars are going across back and forth across from the front buildings to this back area? That'll, you know, that would be a question that I would have. And then that's going to go up another 10%, 15%, whatever.
And keep in mind, it's all, it's on private property circulation. We're on Amboy Road for 20 feet, you know, going across.
Well, is it, your driveways line up directly across? I mean, you're just going across Amboy Road? You're not on Amboy Road for any distance?
Pretty much, yes, pretty much. Not exact, but pretty much, yes. We don't, we're not, there's a, see this here?
Right.
That driver, we don't utilize that one because we utilize the one over here. But when the facility's up, we use that. So the driving on Amboy Road into here is actually going to be less, because that way we go straight across. So there'll be more straight across movement on Amboy Road than there will be up and down Amboy Road.
Okay. It's still, I guess, it's still, it's not a direct line across your, you got a little bit of a dogleg move there to a left, you know, a right-left or a left-right along Amboy Road to go from one side to the other.
Well, what lines up, though, is from the dealership, this, so we would be traveling, not on Amboy Road, we'd be traveling in our lot.
Okay. So you're saying you would go straight across Amboy Road and into this?
Basically, yep.
Mr. Savino, knowing how these dealerships work, you have a lounge in your place for people that come in and are going to wait for their car, correct?
Yes.
That's in the main hub, in the main building?
Mm-hmm.
They only bring their car and they put it in a spot. You don't want them, you don't want anybody except your employees moving a car anywhere?
No.
Let alone driving across the street?
Definitely not.
And it's probably going to be confusing if you were to do so?
No, it'd be uncontrollable. We will never do it.
And I think you have a pickup service and a drop-off service, that people get picked up at a certain spot, and that's outside the area where you would drop off.
Right over here.
So that's the nucleus there. That's where you want everybody, you want them to go sit in the lounge while they get an oil change or whatever they might happen to be doing. You don't want them traversing your property.
Definitely not.
And it would probably be unsafe, I would think. Okay. Let's see if anybody else has any questions. You're always in your compound.
Right, always on my property, yes.
You're not cruising up and down Amboy Road?
Definitely not.
You're on your own? Because I'm familiar with that.
My own little world, yes.
Right. Subaru is also going to be...
Subaru is over here.
Right, but they're going to be...
Same thing.
Anticipating with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Not serviced there, they'll still be serviced here, but they use this driveway, so if we need the parking, we'll just move through the property.
And then you'll free up, you'll free up your lot?
Yes.
For new, other inventory?
I mean, honestly, I don't want my employees on Amboy Road. The less, because, you know, the less...
Chance of something happening.
Chance it happens on my property. I'm sorry, my property.
Got you. Mr. Izzo, Mr. Scogno?
Yeah, it just seems like a lot of parking spaces to me, I agree. I mean, it's a mixture, right? You're going to have service vehicles in there and new vehicles?
No.
No?
No. Let me, from one perspective...
You do a lot of service business.
We do a lot of service business, but on the other side, in a perfect world, every customer that would come in, we would have the parts, and we would have the technicians to work on it. So if 100 came in, 100 would go out. That doesn't happen in the real world. 100 comes in and there's 200 or 300 always either waiting for parts, waiting for customers to pick them up. So that's why you need that kind of space. It's not that I'm going to work on every one of those cars every day. It's that they can come in the shop, we have to order parts, they could sit there for a week or two. So that's not, that's not a ton of spots for the operation that we're running right now.
Vehicles seem like a problem.
The vehicles aren't a problem, getting the parts might be a problem.
Yeah. It means a lot of spots just for service, okay?
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes. So on average, do you have a number you could supply us with, how many cars you repair on average in a week?
Well, approximately 100 come in a day. So there's 500 a week.
500 a week.
Right. That doesn't mean we finish 500 a week.
No, no, I get it. I was there. Trust me, I had my car fixed there. It wasn't one day.
Did we do a good job? No.
You did, but it wasn't one day.
That's why I need the lot to park your car there.
Yeah. So, but these front lots, now you're gonna put new cars where you're putting the service cars now, you said, across from.
Here, you mean?
Yep.
I could utilize some of it for new car shares.
Well, are you?
It depends on the volume of new cars. We have this, and what's not on the map is I have the eight acres on 18, where we park the majority of our new cars.
Right, right. I know where that is, too, but like I said, are you gonna put cars there? I mean, that's kind of important, what you're gonna do with that part.
Yeah, we'll utilize this for new cars. We utilize it now for new cars. We have a fenced-in, if you're familiar with the area over here.
Yeah.
That when we work on emergency vehicles or town vehicles, we keep them locked up over there. So part of, that's not gonna change. We're always gonna, we're required by many municipalities for ambulance and police cars, that we keep them locked up and secured. So that's really that part of the lot. This here, I don't really anticipate a lot of new cars being parked there.
And then at the very bottom, you said, right there, a service area, too, right?
Yeah, the Subarus, the Subaru's service area is a little bit over there. Not much, but yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Andrews?
I'm just trying to get, I've also been there with my car. I'm sorry.
No, I'm just trying to visualize it because there are some residences over there, if I'm not mistaken. The Elks is there, there's the apartment building, then there are some of the, some residences?
These are residential, that's the only three that are there.
There are residences there?
Yes.
Okay.
These three, right here.
How is that gonna affect them?
Shouldn't affect them at all. We're not going that way past their houses. We're going here and in there.
And their residences are also located in the same zone, the same EDO zone. I know Rich said it was residential, but it's not. It's commercial.
And how long has All American Ford been there?
As far as I know, back to 1975.
And do you have any idea how long the residences have been there?
No, I don't, I'm sorry.
Can't speak from the audience. Sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Testa Verdi? Mr. Clancy?
Jim?
No, I have nothing.
Ms. Savant, go ahead.
So, we have been discussing here, because one thing I noticed, there is an entrance towards your existing parking lot, right in, not exactly straight ahead of the driveway opening on the main facility. But it looks like you don't want to use those two entrances to the existing parking lot, but instead, you're proposing to have the driveway entrance, you're closing the two towards Spring Valley Road, but you wanna use the one next to the residences. Why is that?
No, I have no intention of closing any of the driveways. I believe there's one here.
Correct.
There's one here, and there's one over here.
So, but why not? Why not then use those for the cars to go back and forth? Because if you have two curb openings in front of each other, your cars are going straight across the roadway, you're not disturbing the residences. Right now, with the way it is proposed, your cars are gonna traverse north on Old Amboy Road and then enter into the new driveway.
No, no, I'm sorry, if you misunderstood. This driveway here, which is existing for this property, we have no intention of using that at all. There are three driveways here and there's three over here. They don't line up exactly, but they're gonna come from this property, either in that one, that one, or that one.
So maybe we can actually get that clarified when Mr. Turner or Mr. Kennel get up for their testimony. Because based off of the site plan, the way that the site plan lays out with the parking and everything, the new access, or that access that's highlighted up top, is basically shown on the site plans as your main access. Based off of the operation.
You talk about this here?
Yeah.
Yes.
There's no intention that that's any type of exit or anything.
Okay. So then, what I would think that makes sense would be for that to be some sort of emergency kind of entrance?
Yeah, absolutely.
For emergency vehicles and for it to be.
I'm sorry if I was misunderstood. We were never using this, never.
I think the way the exhibit is displayed, it makes it feel as if that is the primary entrance. I'm like, why would your cars?
No, sorry for that.
Not just the exhibit, the site plan, right? Because there's parking shown along where you're saying you wanna access, there's parking shown on the site plan there. So according to the site plan, which is what the zoning officer and everyone would look to if this were to get approved, the site plan shows parking there, and it shows this driveway as your main access onto the site. I really think that that needs to be clarified, and the access should be very clearly shown. And perhaps that, that access that we're showing to the north there, you know, sort of minimized and shown as an emergency only?
Yes, no problem.
Okay, Ms. Savant? Good? Okay. You have another witness?
I do.
Go to another witness.
Bring up Mr. Turner. Thank you. Go hobble back.
How we doing, sir? I'll swear you in. Raise your right hand, please. So I'll only swear any testimony you provide before this board will be the truth and the whole truth.
I do.
Okay, thank you. Can you just state your name for the record, please?
Scott Turner, T U R N E R.
Thank you, sir.
Scott, I'm, Mr. Chair and Board members, I'm presenting. Scott is a professional engineer, so I'll ask Scott if you could just share with the board your license, your educational background, and your work affiliation?
Sure. I am a graduate of the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I hold a Bachelor's of Science degree in civil engineering. I have 30, nearly 35 years of experience in the field of civil engineering and land development, all of my time with Menlo Engineering Associates. I am currently a principal engineer for the firm. I'm a licensed professional engineer in good standing.
I will accept your credentials. I know you, you've appeared before here many times. I thank you. We have a new member of the board, I wanted him to hear the credentials, and of course, those will be watching at home, so I appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
So Scott, you have the benefit of hearing some of the questions we've already heard, but I want you to go back to, you know, zero and start with the existing conditions and the proposed layout.
Sure.
That we can get into some more of the specifics.
Sure. So the plan that's up on the, on the screens is the same plan that's on my easel that I brought. Just quickly for the record, it is titled All American Ford Existing Conditions Exhibit. I believe it has a date of, I wanna say 21524, I can't quite see that. We can mark that as Exhibit A1 if you'd like to do that.
Sounds good. What's the title of it?
All American Ford Existing Conditions Exhibit.
Thank you.
So just for point of reference, and again, for the purposes of the record, it is Block 16000, lots 4, 6.11, and 15.11. The total property contains 19.5 acres, and that is the area, not the proper dealership lot, that's the areas of the three properties that have been in discussion so far. The property itself has approximately 900 feet of frontage along Old Amboy Road, which is located in this area here, and then another 125 feet of frontage along Old Amboy Road up in this most northeasterly corner, which was the area of question with that new driveway. There's also frontage approximately 430 feet of frontage along Spring Valley Road at the smaller parking area located in this location here. For purposes of references, New Jersey State Highway Route 9 is up in this upper right quadrant. Spring Valley Road is down in this lower, lower right quadrant here. All of the wooded areas that you see within the existing properties here are all encumbered with freshwater wetlands, buffers, and/or floodplains. That's why you do not see any additional development within these areas around the existing parking lots on Lot 6.11 and 15.11. There are also regulated features at the rear of Lot 4, the most westerly section of Lot 4, and there is additional freshwater wetlands in that general area as well. There are three single-family homes that are located adjacent to the property itself and with frontage on Old Amboy Road. There's a large wooded complex and tree service company to the west, and commercial properties to the south, including a newer-built Hampton Inn Hotel. The Old Bridge Elks and the wooded property are also located immediately to the north of the property, and there's a Wawa Gas and Convenience Store that's located, you know, next to the All American Ford dealership on 9, and they, too, have access out onto Old Amboy Road. So the site is also subject to the EDO 3 Economic Development Opportunity 3 District. It's subject to their zoning standards, and as pointed out, the application does require a conditional use variance and a number of C-type bulk variances. So we'll go back to lots 6.11 and 15.11, which is these two here, which were the subject of a prior approval. That property does contain an existing parking lot, a slender lot along Old Amboy Road, and then a little bit larger of a lot at the rear of that. And immediately behind that on property is an existing stormwater management basin. These properties are operated by All American Ford, as testified, too. There are, oh, and there also is another small parking lot that I pointed out on Spring Valley Road, which is going to remain. There are roughly 520 parking spaces located on those two properties, so I think there's more spaces than you might think is there, but there's roughly 520 spaces existing on that property. And the access points on Old Amboy Road, there are two existing driveways that lead out onto Old Amboy Road, and they may be a little hard to see, but there's one, I believe, in this location here, another one a little bit further up. So there's two points of access existing on Old Amboy Road now, and there is also an existing driveway from Lot 4, and that existing development onto Old Amboy Road. So those are the access points leading off of these properties. So Lot 4 itself is the property that's under contract to purchase. It contains an existing, what I'll call an existing contracting business with multiple structures on site, outdoor storage with access from that existing drive out on Old Amboy Road. That property also has, you know, a number of debris piles and other things located within the area that's been disturbed. The rear of that property is predominantly wooded, and the property drains predominantly in a westerly direction, heading away from Old Amboy Road to the west and to the rear of the property, which is where we have our stormwater basin located, and that is the area where there is an existing floodplain that we needed to manage. And just quickly, as previously pointed out, any of the structures, the debris, anything going on with respect to that lot and that activity will be completely removed with the application, should the board act favorably on it. Before I move to the proposed conditions, does anybody have any questions in regards to the existing site?
Normally, I'd let you finish, and then we'll go to the professionals, then save the board for the last.
Okay, so this is the second and last exhibit that was prepared by my office, All American Ford, simply entitled Site Plan Exhibit, again dated 21524, and we can mark this as A2?
That's good.
Okay, so this rendering here represents a Google aerial with the proposed improvements superimposed on top. And along with the site plan, you can see some various greenery, which represent the plant materials that are per the landscape plan that was part of your package. So the proposal here is to take the existing parking lot and remove some of that asphalt and parking space and replace it with a new one-story, 13,742-square-foot service building. That building will be 197 feet long, and it will have 68 foot of depth on the north side, which is the side where I'm pointing to, and then 76 foot of depth on the, on the south side. The building height is 34 feet 5 inches. There are seven overhead doors proposed on the west side of the building, and there are two overhead doors proposed on the, on the east side of the building. And what you'll notice here is the placement of the building and the placement of those overhead doors, we made great efforts to make sure that those doors were moved as far away as possible as we could from the residential neighbors next to us, which is why the bulk of these overhead doors are located at what I'll call the rear of the building, you know, facing towards the west. So the bulk of the activity with respect to in and out of the building will be accomplished, you know, as far away from the existing residents as we possibly could get. The building, again, I'll just reiterate, does not have a service right-up area, there's no parts department, there's no customer drop-offs, there will be no public permitted anywhere within this property. You heard the testimony from Mr. Savino in regards to the operation, so I won't waste time dealing with that. But that, this area is strictly for employees of the All American Ford dealership. So when you put this new building in, there's obviously a reduction of parking, and there will be 335 spaces remaining within the existing parking lot after that building is built. Some of those spaces are the existing spaces within the area of where the building is going, and the remaining spaces are within the areas that are existing today, located in that parking lot along Old Amboy Avenue, as well as the parking lot located on Spring Valley Road. Those parking spaces and parking lots will not be altered, the driveways will not be altered. There's no proposal other than some pavement work within the area to get some utilities into what I'll call the work area, which is this lighter gray area, which is immediately around the service building itself. What is not shown on this plan, but I do wanna point it out because it was in the staff reports, rightfully so, is there will be a refuse and recyclable enclosure placed somewhere on this property. It just never made it onto the site plans for whatever reason. So, but we will comply with that and provide it, and provide those revised plans to staff for their review. So that's what's really going on with respect to what I'll call the two existing lots. The new lot in question, which is furthest up to the, to the north, there, the proposal there is to replace what's on that property with a new parking lot with 382 parking spaces. As already pointed out, those parking spaces will be just for the benefit of service vehicles, either being queued up, waiting for service, they're done with service, but the customer's not there ready to pick up, or it could be cars that are simply waiting there for parts to be delivered or ordered, and they can't move the cars until then. So that's what that lot will, will be for. The remainder of the lots, again, down in these two existing lots here where the service building is going, will basically remain to be used as it is currently, which can be either with display of new car inventory, storage of new car inventory, and/or, you know, queuing up of vehicles waiting for service. But the bulk of those cars waiting for service or related to service is up in this new parking lot located on Lot 4. Now, there is a driveway, we did propose a driveway out onto Old Amboy Road. It was never the intent to have that be the main focus or the main driveway into the lot. It was simply there, there was an opportunity to maintain it. It's beneficial, obviously, for emergency services as well. I think the testimony here is if the board is so inclined, I feel comfortable agreeing that we could make that less of a more formal driveway and make it more for emergency services. But it will be up to the dealership itself to direct their employees that when they come over, they come over and use one of the existing driveways that are located on Old Amboy Road and circulate within this area in that fashion. One of the other things that we did in here, and I don't think it was ever talked about, was there is a connecting driveway proposed between the service building area and this new parking field. And the reason for that was that that would avoid people having to come out onto Old Amboy Road from this new parking lot, making the right, going down Old Amboy Road, and then making the right into the existing parking facilities to get to the service building. There's no need for that whatsoever, they'll use this connecting driveway here, and that was purposely done that way in order to keep people as much as they possibly can off of Old Amboy Road. Old Amboy Road's a public road, though. We wanna, I just wanna make sure, and I'm sure you all understand that, but it is a public road. It is permitted to be used. So the activities that are going on there now, frankly, aren't gonna, in my opinion anyway, as just a civil engineer, I don't see that as changing all that much. When we take the, the reduction of the parking that's there now and we add in the new parking lot, you know, the numbers are such that we would have a grand total of 1,700 in spaces total, once we're all said and done, versus 520 that are there now. So there's approximately 200 spaces being added net, not 382, there's 200, you know, spaces being net with this proposed development. In terms of the utilities, you know, they're pretty mundane and available here. We have gas, water, electric, telephone services, they'll all be brought in through underground services for Old Amboy Road. We have no problem doing that. Stormwater management, the existing stormwater basin that's there now. Stormwater management, the existing stormwater basin that's there now will remain as is, we're not touching it, we're not increasing impervious coverage, we're actually making the condition better in terms of water quality because we're taking away paved area, which is a treatable area, and replacing it with what in quotation marks "clean water" from a roof. So we have that condition. At the most westerly portion of the new parking lot on Lot 4, we've designed a bio-infiltration basin, let me make sure, bio-retention basin, I'm sorry, bio-retention basin to accommodate the additional runoff from the new parking facility. We also have some porous paving going in up in this area here that's been vetted out by a geotechnical engineer in terms of soil testing. They did a number of soil tests throughout the property in terms of, for our purposes for stormwater management, and perhaps most importantly is the fact that this property and project has gone to the DEP and it's obtained its flood hazard permits required, and I will tell you with no uncertainty that it was an exhaustive review for stormwater management, which they do, and they make sure they hold your feet to the fire and you comply with everything they want you to or you don't get a permit. We have flood hazard permits, we only have outstanding the freshwater wetland permits and the transition area waivers only because they have to wait a certain, for a certain season before they can finish their review, but that would certainly have no impact on stormwater management, and in my opinion, there's nothing that we have not complied with in terms of buffer averaging and those types of general permits. The flood hazard permit's the big one to get because that's the stormwater review and sets the limits of development on the property, and we're there with that. So once again, we do have this cross-connection, we do have a 50-foot buffer behind the existing residential development there, which we honor, we're not within that buffer, we've maintained that existing buffer. There's also been some word about some drainage issues existing behind their property, so what we've done is we've made sure we've got stormwater up in that area, we've also proposed to install one or two inlets within the grassed area in that buffer to properly drain that area out. We've also had conversations with your staff and agreed to work with them to make sure that we do whatever it is possible that we can to alleviate any drainage condition. I will tell you, the drainage condition is not a subject of anything that All American Ford has done, it's just a product of what the existing condition looks like right now. But the, what we're going to do to improve it will certainly, in my opinion, be an improvement over what's there, what's there today. For lighting, we have a, you know, pretty standard lighting program, all LED fixtures, they're pole-mounted fixtures with a 17 and 1/2-foot mounting height. We do have some other fixtures around the building that are mounted at 18 feet. We did provide the isolux calculations and lighting plans demonstrating that we are at zeros at all property limits, we have no impact in terms of that. I understand lighting is lighting and you're going to see it, but in terms of values, there will be no spillage off property onto other other properties, specifically with respect to the neighbors, the residential neighbors itself. They're all dark sky compliant lights, they'll be set on timers so that there's security lighting only really at the, you know, after dusk, and they'll be set not to come back on, so we'll comply with all of those requirements. For landscaping, we've done as significant landscape plan, I think, as we possibly can. All of the existing wooded area that you see on the exhibit now, again, is all the regulated wetland areas that can't be disturbed or touched. We have the 50-foot buffer behind the homes, which is also an existing wooded area. We are proposing a substantial supplement to that existing buffer with additional evergreen trees and shrubbery we've planted, we believe, as much as we possibly can within that area. And in terms of the total site itself, we're planting 175 trees, 466 shrubs, along with some ground cover plantings, and that does not take into account all of the plantings that go into the bio-retention basin as part of that design. And once again, we are supplementing that buffer behind the homes and along the side leading up to Old Amboy Road, heading what is to the northeast with additional plant materials to buffer the activity. We're in, again, the zone, the EDO3 zone, as pointed out to you, we do require a conditional use variance, we also have a number of C variances that I would like to just read in to the record for the planning testimony of our planner. All right, so starting with the C variances, I'm reciting the March 5, 2024 review letter from Mr. Dorji and from Ms. Sawant and from Mr. Trel from Environmental Resolutions. I'm on page six, down under the bulk variances section, I thought it would be just easier to use theirs as a guide. So number one is the maximum front yard setback, the maximum permitted setback in this zone is 50 feet. It's a little odd, it's a maximum, not a minimum, so the applicant is proposing 244.9 feet, and it really is just a product of, you know, the site configuration itself, where that building would fit, you know, within that area that's not within the regulated area. So the building really had to be set in this location here, further away, and it's a it's a service building, not open to the public, so in my, from an engineering point of view, I really don't see any detriment to that particular variance. The second variance is the minimum parking area landscape buffer from a right-of-way, which is required to be 25 feet. I think there might be a typo in this, it should be, we are existing non-conformity at 15.9 feet, and that's the buffer area between the parking edge along Old Amboy Road and the right-of-way of Old Amboy Road. So that's not 21 feet, it's 15.9 feet.
Scott, I just want to stop one second right there, that with that particular bulk variance, that's also the one standard in the conditional use standards that we do not meet as part of this application.
That is correct, yes.
If we could just show the board that one more time with the pointer, along that existing line, parking lot should be how far back?
25 feet, and as part of the original approval back in 14, 15, it was granted to be located within, you know, 14.9 feet.
Thanks, I just wanted to stop.
15.9 feet, I'm sorry, 15.9 feet. Good?
Yep, yeah.
Third one is rear and side lot line parking area setback. As Mr. Klauser pointed out, we had shown some parking and there is a retaining wall in this very corner, right there, again, for, you know, it's the most southwest parking lot corner of the new parking field on Lot 4. We just missed the fact that it was a little too close to the property line, and there is a retaining wall in that area, too. We will agree, we'll eliminate that variance by either moving a couple of those parking spaces over, or we'll have to lose a couple of spaces, and we'll make sure they are outside of the buffer. Now, I, what I'm not sure of is whether or not the retaining wall can be within that area, and I didn't see anything that would say it could not. The reason being is that we, this area along the, again, the south westerly side of the new parking lot here, there is, that the parking itself and the curb line honors the 25-foot setback, but there is a retaining wall, it's a it's a lower-height wall, but there is a retaining wall nonetheless along that side that is within that buffer, so if that still requires relief, we're seeking it, but I didn't see where a retaining wall could not be in that buffer.
So it's been, this board and the planning board's practice that that retaining walls are structures, basically, they qualify as structures, and that, so that's the reason why we noted that as a variance.
Okay, so we would still request variance relief for that condition because I have no way possible to get that wall out of that buffer, I just, we couldn't fit the parking rows that we've got within that area, so that's that's why. And it's relief that we've requested already, it's just, we can get rid of a portion of it, we just can't get rid of all of it. The fourth one is the commercial building and parking area setback, which is the minimum required setback from a lot's principal commercial building is 15 feet. We're proposing a parking area setback from the principal commercial building of 0 feet from the principal commercial structure. This was another odd one for me, so what I'm, because we don't have any, particularly on this side, south side of the new building here, right off that building is the service driveway, the circulation driveway going around that building, because the driveway is touching that building and all of the other sidewalks that we have, we have, you know, sidewalks around most of this building here, but they're 7 feet wide, you know, or so, they're not 15 feet wide, which would be customary for a a commercial structure that is open to the public, this is not that case, as you've heard, so we do seek relief from that, from that particular section in the ordinance. There is no parking, the physical parking space is nowhere near that, it's just that it's the driveway which is considered part of the parking area. And I think that that wraps up the the bulk variances for the purposes of our planner and for the record. I'm moving on to page seven, the design waivers, as we do have some design waivers as well that I'd like to just discuss.
Scott, one, I apologize, just one, one thing, I didn't want to interrupt while you're still on variances, we did note one additional variance as we were, we were preparing here this evening, as far as the signage goes, and maybe the architect can address this with regard to, you know, showing the board, but I think that we should note that the zoning, the ordinance permits one facade sign, but the, according to the architectural elevations, I believe there's three actual facade signs. The the area isn't in question, it actually, even all three signs sum are less than the permitted area, but the number of signs is is just one that's permitted and and the plan proposes three.
Okay, we'll, we'll let the architect describe the signage.
Yeah.
I can tell you, though, it's it's certainly because of branding requirements, you know, Ford, and that's.
I imagine, I imagine that that'll be the testimony, but since you were listing the variances, I just wanted to make sure that we got that on the record with all the rest of the variances.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, design waivers, page seven, the first one is bicycle parking spaces for bicycle racks, and I'm going to sound like a broken record and I apologize, but it's again because of the fact that there are no, it's not a public space, it's not open to the public, you know, employees are going to be shuttling back and forth from this location, frankly, we we would like to seek the waiver from providing bicycle racks, we do not believe they would be used. The second one would be the sidewalks, so sidewalks are required to be integrated, connecting all parking areas throughout the site. The second condition is sidewalks should be at least 5 feet wide along both sides of all commercial streets. The third one, sidewalks, which are at least 5 feet wide, shall be provided along the frontage of the site, that one we are going to agree to do, we'll add the additional sidewalk along Old Amboy Road on on our side, on on the west side of Old Amboy Road along these frontages. There is some now that sort of connects the parking area that's down by Spring Valley Road, it turns the corner, comes up, gets to a, like a mid-block crossing, and that's where it stops. We're going to agree to provide the sidewalk along the remainder of our frontage with all required ADA handicap ramps. And the fourth one is sidewalks, which are at least 12 feet wide, provided along the front access area to commercial buildings, that sort of goes hand in hand with that variance that we were talking about, begun, because it's not open to the public, we do not have those spaces, and it's just a matter of geometry and how the building fits within the area that we're allotted here and honoring buffers and the regulated features within the property. So items 2, 1, 2, sub 1, sub 2, and sub 4 are waiver requests, sub 3 we do agree to comply with. The third item is sidewalks shall be constructed along all streets, and again, I think that goes hand in hand with the one we just spoke about, and that we're going to add it to Old Amboy Road. Item number four, lighting standards upon which lights are placed shall be spaced a distance of approximately four times the height of the light, so the lights are 17 and 1/2 feet high, requiring spaces of 72 feet. This, I did speak to Ms. Sawant, Mr. Dorji about this, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but I do believe they're in agreement, that's that's sort of an outer, an outdated ordinance, the photometrics that are available to design lighting now are much different than they were then, so there, there's more lighting standards that we can utilize to provide what's needed in terms of lighting, minimum lighting standards, without having to add all those additional light poles, because that's what that would be, to comply with that, we'd have to add additional light poles, and we don't need them frankly, because we can comply without them.
And we don't want more light poles.
Thank you. That's what I was hoping you were going to say. Okay, item number five, which is listed as a waiver, applicant which utilizes, non-resident use, which utilizes approximately 1,000 square feet or more of land, shall include provisions for collection, disposition, and recycling, as I testified before, we will be adding and complying with that requirement. Moving to page eight, number six, parking spaces are required to be 10 by 20, we are proposing stalls within Lot 4, the large parking area, at 8 and 1/2 by 18. That is very customary for a use of this type, whether you're storing vehicles or storing them for service, it doesn't really matter, they don't get moved around frankly a lot, they sit there and get moved once in and once out and for service, and that's about it, so it's just a matter of efficiency, and, you know, we, it's, it's not an a customary type of of condition for parking spaces, they won't be moved by anybody else other than the employees of the dealership itself. Number seven, curb ADI adjacent to traffic close shall be a minimum of 5 feet, we will agree to comply with that, we do not need that waiver. And lastly, well, it's not lastly, appendix G, schedule of minimum floor loading requirements, we are required to have a loading space, we do not, we're requesting the waiver, again, because of the, the way the service dealership is going to be used, there's no parts, there's no deliveries, any parts will get delivered to the dealership itself and then, you know, shuttled over to this location, so there honestly is no need, there's no office space, there's nothing here, so there's no need to have a loading zone because they won't be delivered to this location. And there was a couple others that were within this, in this letter, that didn't get listed up here as waivers, but I do want to point them out. Item number nine is a parking lot landscaping requirement, 20% of the gross parking area is required to be landscaped, we calculate that to be approximately 3 and 1/2%, and again, it's, it's, it's a non-public use, it's a, it's a storage lot, you know, behind, you know, for the most part, everything that's out there now, we believe we provided enough supplemental landscaping in the areas, frankly, that would benefit more than the parking area itself, we focused our landscaping around the existing uses on Old Amboy Road, rather than introducing more within the parking area that nobody really is going to see. The last one is parking lot shade trees, 70 feet on center, and our plan provides shade trees within the parking lot, but they are variable spacing, we do not comply with the 70 feet on center, again, for the same reason that I pointed out just before. So those are the variances and the design waivers, the last thing I really have is to just, just quickly mention the staff reports, the March 5, 24 letter, which we were talking about here, I have no other items in that particular report to respond to or to discuss, we agree to comply with everything that's there or work with staff. We did have a meeting, remote meeting with staff and go through, which is something we try to do, and was very helpful, we went through the staff reports, and again, Ms. Sawant, Mr. Dorji, your office, anybody has any questions, we can certainly go through it, but there's nothing in terms of me satisfying what's in there and getting that accomplished. The last letter that we got, the other, other letter we got was from the Fire Bureau of Fire Prevention District Number 3, from Mr. Matthew Bond, this is dated January 31, 2021. We recently reached out to him, a number of months ago, Mr. Klauser and I met with Tom Hart at his office, we went through the plan, we reviewed it, he had asked us to provide him with a fire truck movement plan, which we did, he asked for a hydrant or two on the property, which of course we agreed to comply with. Since that time, we resubmitted back to Matthew, we gave him the same truck movement plan he has indicated to me through an email that the truck movement plan is satisfactory. Anything else that's in this letter, we agree to comply with. Anything else that's in this letter, we agree to comply with.
While we're on the staff reports, there is a request in the staff report that the lots be consolidated.
Right.
We have no issue consolidating lots 6.11 and lot four. Those will be under our control. I can't take lot five, 15.11, it belongs to somebody else. But functionally, the two lots are, are working, 611 and four are working together. And after, if we take title, if the board grants it, we'll consolidate those two lots. But I just want to be clear that I can't pull in 1511 to it, but the other two certainly.
Scott, if you could, you, you identified the, the driveways on, on the existing conditions plan. Can you go through the driveways as they are shown on your site plan and how they compare or pair up with the driveways on the dealership side?
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little hard to see, but there's a driveway that's located in, and our plans did not clearly show it and that, that's my fault and I apologize. We'll make it more clear. But there is an existing driveway in this vicinity here that lines up, it doesn't line up exactly, but it lines up fairly close to the driveway leading into the dealership lot itself. There's another existing driveway that's more, you know, noticeable down in this location here, which is the most southerly location of the existing lot, parking area along Old Amboy Road. That does also sort of line up a little bit with the driveway that's across the street as well. So there's not a lot of movement, in my opinion, up and down Old Amboy Road. They're going to continue to do what they do today, I would hope anyway, and they, they, that's the only driveways they have to utilize and that's what they would utilize in the proposed condition. And then once again, we do have that driveway up at the new parking lot off of lot four, which I, I believe you folks will discuss in terms of how you want that handled.
Now, those two driveways that are on lot 1511 on your, based on the comments we received before, that there's some parking shown in some of those areas, you can amend the site plan to show those as, as clear driveways so that they can be used as means to go across Amboy Road without actually driving onto Amboy Road.
Yes, correct.
I have, are you talked about the DEP, Mr. Chair, and Scott really went through everything that we had sort of prepped for and, and just made clear that all the technical requirements and the memo, other than the ones that we highlighted, we can comply with. So he's available for any questions that you or the professionals may have.
Mr. Darji.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few questions and, and Mr. Turner did provide just about all the testimony that our, our memo requested. We, we have quite a few comments in our memo where we request testimony and so far, there's a few items which I believe the, you know, the other witnesses will testify to, but stuff that we asked Mr. Turner to specifically testify to has been provided. And we did meet Ms. Wan, our office, did meet with the applicant and their professionals to, to discuss our technical comments, so I'm confident that they can address a lot of the technical comments. I do have some questions regarding the accesses onto the site. As I look at the, the aerial and the street view, it looks like there's a lot of cars that sort of like block most of the accesses getting onto the site. So you can see why we thought you were proposing the, the northern access as, as your main access, because even on the street view, a lot of the accesses are blocked by vehicles, which I'm assuming or presuming are either vehicles belonging to the dealership or their employees. Is, so is, is that going to be alleviated as part of this, this application since we're creating space? I understand it's a public road, totally get that, but it's a public road and it's not really meant to be part of the business operation, right? So you have employees and, and either their service vehicles or new vehicles being parked all along that roadway. Some of them are parked perpendicular, blocking that driveway that you're talking about. Again, it seems to me that that's, that's sort of, you know, impinging on the public's use of the roadway.
Yeah, and look, that's, that to me, and that's, that's always a tough one because it is a public roadway. It's an enforcement issue. I mean, if it's not-
Well, I mean, it's not really an enforcement, we're asking your applicant to, to not do it.
Well, yeah, and that would be up to the applicant. I'm sure he would attempt to do that and I'm, I'm also sure it's probably hard to control all of his employees that may be there.
Gives him a paycheck.
Frankly, it's not only, you know, it may not only be his employees. But again, I, I can't speak to that because I just don't know. There are other activities going on in that area. But yes, we can, we'll, we can revise the site plan, obviously clearly show the existing driveways, move the cars within the parking lot so they can't park there. But the whole idea behind this design was to make that cross connection driveway so that they would not have to use that driveway from lot four, which means that they have to have the other driveways open or this doesn't work. So they're going to do that. We will have to, because the driveways will be there, nobody along Old Amboy Road should be parking at that driveway. They shouldn't block the driveway. We can certainly make sure we check site distances and make sure that we stripe areas that we need to based off the driveways, if that's how the board would so choose.
Scott.
Yes.
I couldn't resist. It is a public right of way, but it's not meant for vehicle storage by a developer, right?
Of course.
So if you are in front of the board, and I think should the board act favorably, that should be one of the conditions, that, you know, your vehicle storage should be on your property, not on a public right of way. So it's not the question of just blocking your driveway, but it's also about storing vehicles along Old Amboy Road. Because if it's a public right of way, it's meant for other people to park too. But what I noticed, I've been going through near maps to at least like four, five years, the roadway is completely parked, like all, all the, it's, it's Ford's cars that are parked on the street. So I think that-
No, there's, there's no issue with that condition.
Thank you.
None at all.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
No, I would let Rakesh speak, I, I just took over, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I, I was, I was pretty much, that was my only, only real comment regarding the engineering.
Sutetral?
Yeah, I think Rakesh pretty much took, you know, answered, asked my question, which was the concern of how the, you know, you have two existing driveways at the south, you know, in this portion. It isn't clear on the plans that they're now still going to be reused, which now we know they will be. The one thing that's noted, that's been noted and I see on the plans is the, not the southernmost driveway, but the next one up, right now is actually parked, striped for parking spots. So those have to be removed if you're going to be used, used as functional. The other thing is that if you're going to be building sidewalk along that side of the road and putting ADA ramps, you'll be rebuilding those driveways. So you have the opportunity, if there is a little bit of an offset compared to the driveway on the east side, you have the opportunity now to line it up exactly. So the cars are going straight across and not, not any kind of a dogleg maneuver here.
Yeah, and I think I can agree to review that, look at that, we'll, you know, advise our client what that means, but I, I don't see how that's a significant impact in terms of, you know, what we're looking at here.
I believe the one to the south, the southernmost driveway is a little off, is a little off.
We can clean that up.
In, in fact, closer to that southern driveway, I see over years, there has been a lot of stuff that has been stored. So I'm assuming with these site improvements, there, there will be cleanup in that corner. Because I see a trailer parked, I see a few trucks parked there. There is quite a lot of clutter.
Yeah, let's give us some room to breathe.
Right. Because there are, there are times when it's that area, so as you enter the site from that southernmost driveway to the left, it, it has cars parked, like literally, there's no room.
And that, and that, I think that's one of the reasons why we're here and why they're making this investment, is to provide some relief. You know, I think they're busting at the seams, quite frankly, is what's happening and that you see that, more dealerships than you may think, especially when inventory gets back to the way, you know, hopefully it'll get back to at some point. So they need more space and that's what's why the, the parking lot is proposed.
But it's not just new cars. I'm not talking about the new cars. There's a lot of junk that over the years I see being stored in that corner.
You can't really identify what it is from the aerial. It looks like it could be materials, pallets.
Right.
Who knows what it is, but the idea is, the intention of your application is for vehicles to be parked and stored there, not things that should be indoors.
Correct, yes, yes.
So could you, would that be an acceptable condition of approval that really, you know, clean up that area?
Clean up that.
We, we don't want things stored there other than vehicles. If you have large, I, I don't even know what it is, you can't really identify. It looks like some sort of totes and pallets and things like that. We'd prefer, not prefer, but we'd request as a condition of approval that that stuff not be stored.
Yeah, yeah, that makes perfect sense. It should be for vehicle storage.
Thank you.
And Mr. Turner, did I hear that you will be submitting revised plans for compliance showing or identifying those access points?
Correct, yes. If the board acts favorably, we'll of course revise the plans and show you everything that you're, you're seeking.
And, and as part of those revisions, you'll consult with us as far as what we're going to do to sort of de-emphasize that, the driveway to the north?
Correct, yes, yes. If you'd rather have it open all the time or if you wanted to make it more of an emergency access?
We'd prefer it to be an emergency access and have it either chained and, and that way it's not used.
I, I, that condition I heard from Mr. Savino before would be okay.
I saw the thumbs up.
That's fine.
That's the chairman. On that end, I'm going to start at my left. Questions for this, for the engineer, Mr. Turner? None? Mr. Skodno?
No, thank you.
Chevler?
No, not at this point. Well, actually, I do. So we went into, you said it's an enforcement, it is on.
Bring it down.
You said it's an enforcement issue for the cars that park along the side. I don't think it should be enforcement issue for Olbridge to have to move these people. I mean, it's-
It's, what I meant by that is if there's a violation, a clear violation, if somebody's parked in a, you know, across a driveway or, or blocking somebody from getting out, you know, that, that's an enforcement issue. But if the, it's a public right of way and if it's not signed or restricted for parking, you can park there. I, I totally get that you can't have all American Ford vehicles parked there, storing cars out there, that, that's no. But any, anybody beyond that, it, it's a public roadway and they can park it. If, if, if there is an issue with that or somebody has an issue with that, they can certainly go to the governing body, I suppose, and, and seek to get that road restricted in terms of parking.
So we're, I guess, I'm sorry, Ms. Chevler, I didn't mean to interrupt. I think the concern really is the employees and storage of vehicles. I mean, there aren't strangers, there aren't people that are like patronizing the Wawa that are parking along that road. They're clearly employees and vehicles associated with the dealership. And what we're saying is we'd like, as a condition of approval, should the board act favorably, that ceases.
We have no issue with that.
Thank you. That's, that's, that's the main, main point.
Got it. There's no issue with that condition.
Understand the issue. We understand it and-
I think there should also be signs put up by you guys to remind the employees that park there and everything else that it's a no parking zone, you know, even if they're slightly off on your property, it's still they're blocking the road there.
Understood. I'm not sure if we have the authority to put up signs that would prohibit parking, but we can advise our employees not to be doing it and we would agree as a condition of approval to that.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
And like we said too, in the areas-
No employee parking.
Right.
On your fence, so it's clear.
Understood.
So if there is a violation, we don't have to hear anything if they're getting written up for a ticket or towed.
Got it.
Okay.
Am I right? None, Ms. Glazier?
No.
You had one question I didn't ask before and I wanted to earlier and I know whether you're the person to ask or if it's the owner. Is it going to be used for auto body repair on there?
There's no auto body.
Not public, yours, your auto body service?
Service on property.
On the main building, the new building I'm talking about?
Not on the new service building, no.
Mechanical only?
Mechanical only.
Okay, thank you.
My, oh, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
It's 9:49. I know you have another witness ready.
I have, I have an architect, I have a traffic engineer, and I have a, the planner. When are you thinking of telling me I have to go home? Because then I can pick what witness I think would be next.
I would never be that disrespectful. I would hint at it, but I would never, never be that disrespectful, come out and say it. You have 10 minutes because by rule, we have to stop at 10 for any new testimony to allow for the public.
Okay, so let's-
In which case, we last till 10:30. But if you want to start a witness, I'm telling you, you have 10 minutes.
Okay.
Or if you'd prefer, you're going to have to come back anyway. If you'd prefer, start that new witness afresh when we come, when we meet again.
I think the architect's testimony is probably five minutes.
Okay.
So it might make sense to get him out of the way.
Whatever you want.
Yeah.
It's, he said he's laughing, I don't know what he's laughing at, he's laughing at you, I think.
Well, I think the board should be able to see the, the building. So if they could, I'll bring up Ed Assi.
Go ahead, you got 10 minutes. You can, if you want to bring up another witness, that's fine by me.
Thank you, Scott.
Everybody always picks on the architects.
Scott did such a wonderful job describing the building.
Board attorney, I swear you in, sir.
Raise your right hand, please.
Yes, sir.
Do you solemnly swear any testimony you provide before the board will be the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Okay, can you just state your name for the record, please?
Sure, it's Edward A. Assi, E.A.S.S.E., 44 Lincoln Avenue, Hawthorne, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
Ed, if you could just share your license with the, the board and your educational background and get you qualified as a architect.
Thank you. Licensed, excuse me, graduated New Jersey Institute of Technology, 1980, Bachelor of Architecture, minor in Civil Engineering. I've been registered in the state of New Jersey in 1984, New York '85, Pennsylvania '85, and Connecticut '86. Been in private practice in 1986, also a registered professional planner, and I'm also a retired construction code official from the borough of Morris Plains, which I was there for 24 years.
Will gladly accept his credentials and we thank him for putting that on the record.
Ed, if you could just share with the board the building you designed.
Sure, once again, I want to say thank you. I've been here over 15 years on and off. We've done all of the work at that complex. And it should just be established that a lot of the things we do when we do a building are a direct result of what Ford mandates to us. And what I mean by that is, we struggled to try to get the shape of this building, where to put the doors, where to make sure we had colors, where we had to mitigate what they wanted and what we felt was important to our neighbors. So that's why the building has the shape, it has the look, and it has the color that it does. We recognize the sensitivity of making sure we didn't have six or seven doors facing our building right now. We understood what that was for the people who live to our northeast. So what we did is we made an L-shaped building and plan, which basically only has one door facing our main complex now. We took the other doors around the back facing the wooded area. Ford came back to us with many revisions and changes and then came up with a color scheme. So what we did was on the elevation, Scott, not that one, the other one?
Are we marking any of these?
Oh, I'm sorry, A3 was, was my floor plan, sir.
Got it.
Which was A3. This is going to be A4, which is the elevations part of them. And what we did was, we actually had a mock-up made because we wanted everybody to see that unfortunately, through even digitization, it doesn't come out and read as much, but these are going to be the colors of the building and they're exactly the same as what we've designed previously at the main building. So I brought this down so everybody, including people at home and also in the audience, can see exactly what we're doing. The building, as we said before, through Scott's testimony, was the building is 34 feet, 5 inches tall. It's a metal building, it's fully fire resistant. There's going to be two feet of masonry on one side of it, so when they plow snow, it doesn't damage the metal building. But it's a metal skin building. We've pitched the roof towards the majority of the doors, which is the wooded side. We didn't bring a frame or a gable, we have a mono pitched roof, so the water will be mitigated on one side away from Amboy Road. The building itself, as been testified before, will not have any customers coming to it, will not have any parts drop offs, and everything will be literally transversed by the employees of Ford after the cars are written up in the existing building, I should say to customers. Cars are dropped off at the main building, customer goes home, maybe sits out at the lounge if it's an oil change, and then the car comes across with a person from Ford and then that person will then take it back through a valet. There are nine doors. We also have his and her lavatories. will then take it back through a valet. There are nine doors. We also have his and her lavatory, changing, and locker room areas. We have a break room, and we have necessities such as a masonry compressor room, so we can mitigate the noise. We have a sprinkler room, and we also have an electrical room. The size of the building from a footprint is 13,742. Because of the fact that these buildings take a lot of abuse, the inner walls will be masonry, so we're taking advantage of the little pieces we've carved out for the actual nuts and bolts of the operation. We're gonna have a mezzanine of approximately 1,624 square feet. It's gonna be poured in place. There'll be no wood framing. Everything's gonna be masonry, steel, concrete. It can be fully air conditioned. The doors will be closed when they're working. So once again, we're trying to come up with a neighborhood-friendly building. We also did not go to the maximum height for the building in the area. We're well under that, because we felt we didn't need to do anything more than the 34 feet, 5 inches in height. Once again, the positioning of the building is on the one corner, I should say, the westerly corner more, as per Scott's drawing. And what we did was, we only had one door facing, again, Amboy Road, where we have the backside of the main building that we've been part of the entire time. We talk about signage. As a matter of fact, All-American literally reduced the Ford corporate sign size, but there are certain branding that has to be done for this type of building, which we showed again on that fourth plan, or fourth exhibit, which was my drawing, A1. Ford actually wanted the signage to go across the whole front, and they wanted all of the doors. My client absolutely said, "No way." So that's why we wound up with the small blue portion instead of the whole thing. And we also wound up with only the one door, the door on the right's a man door, but there were only one drive-through door, because Ford's branding needs a door with the actual name of what's going on. So we only put one there. We tried to get it where they were all put around the back, but Ford said, "No, we need some sort of frontage." So we put one door furthest away from the neighbors, and again, all tucked by itself.
Thank you. I have no further questions for Mr. Assi. He's available.
Ms. Dargy?
I have no questions.
Yes, sir.
This is what, I'm sorry, did...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have no questions.
I have no questions. Nothing? Why have I forgotten your name? Mr. On the end?
Oh, yeah. I have no questions.
I'll go to the board. On my left?
Nothing.
Nothing? On my right? Ms. Glancy?
No, I have nothing.
I have nothing.
And that's my last witness for the evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott, for the testimony you gave.
So what I think I'm gonna do, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna go in the audience, and we're gonna listen to the public, and I'm gonna pay attention. And I'm gonna be prepared to respond to their concerns. Members of the public were very nice to me before the hearing, and were able, did speak to me a little bit, and I understand some of the concerns, but the board needs to hear them, and I'll be prepared at the next hearing to respond to them. When do we, when do, when do we want to make an announcement that we're carrying it? After the public is over?
After the public.
We'll do that, okay. Let me get out of the way.
Okay. Mr. Tetrel, I apologize. I finally found it in front of me again.
It's quite right.
I'm gonna... You gonna bring that over? Okay. All right, this is matter 50-2023Z, Old, All-American Ford located at Amboy Road. This is the public portion, so I'm gonna invite anybody from the public that wishes to be heard concerning this application. Please raise your hand or walk forward. We'll take one at a time. As I stated earlier, please speak directly into the microphone. Board attorney will swear you in before your testimony.
Can you raise your right hand for me, please? Do you solemnly swear any testimony you provide before the board will be the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Okay, can you just state your name for the record?
Michelle Marie Carrero.
Michelle. Thank you. And what's your address?
53 Old Amboy Road, Old Bridge, New Jersey, 08857.
Thank you, Michelle.
All right, hey, what would you like to tell the board?
Okay, first of all, number one, the parking situation that we were just talking about. They have, they're proposing to put 382 new spots in. They're supposed to put the building in. Did they mention where their employees are gonna park? Is there an employee parking lot? Because they just park on the street. If they're gonna put another building in, that means they're going to have additional employees, and they're already parking on the street. I think they saw the pictures from the Google Earth. They block off the entrances. They, is there not supposed to be a site triangle when there's ingress egress? Yes? How far is the site triangle for ingress egress? Is it like this? Is it parked, is it parked inside the ingress egress? If you look at the Google Earth, I mean, I think, I believe you guys pulled it up, there's no employee parking. So they park all along the street, and they basically just said that it's a public street, and they can park wherever they want. But they have car carriers, which my neighbor is gonna show you lots of pictures of all this stuff. And when I come through every time, it's like they think, their employees actually think that that's part of Oasis Ford, because there's a street between it. And they don't even look both ways when they fly out with cars and almost take the front of my car off, hit somebody. They almost hit each other when they're walking across the street. They want all this parking for cars that are not occupied by anybody, but do they care about their employees? They have not said one single word about their employees and where they were gonna safely park their employees' cars so that their employees have a parking spot. Because if I recall correctly, when they applied for the variances to put in the different lots that they have right now, at the end of Old Amboy Road, not the, you know, the huge parking lot, there's a little lot, that was supposed to be designated for employee parking. It's not. They were supposed to put some parking spots behind the building where it came across Old Amboy Road. Instead, they said, "Park on the street." I don't know when the last time the gentleman that owns the place was there, but I've never seen him any time that I came in and complained, and nobody ever even told me his name. And when I complain, they tell me this. "Oh, well, the only thing we can do is talk to them." And then they don't talk to them. Maybe it stops for a minute, but there's no, they're using Old Amboy Road as basically part of Oasis Ford. Like, shouldn't the board put no parking signs from the township there? Since when you let them put the apartment complex there, you guys put no parking. When you put away, when you put Wawa there, you guys put no parking. Why do they, why are they privileged? What are they, why are they privileged that they can park on the street and endanger my life every time I have to go that way or come in that way? It just doesn't make any sense. They didn't say anything about their employees. Nothing. Nothing at all. When they, when you guys allowed them to put that pervious coverage in the back that was supposed to be a storage lot, that, again, the owner that I don't think has been there says that it's where the cars are serviced, go back there right now. It's all brand-new cars that are in there. Actually, I'm sorry, it's not brand-new cars. It's brand-new tow trucks that are back there, that are parked back there. When I opened my windows in the summertime, which I've complained about a million times, they said they're gonna have valets that are gonna run back and forth, correct? Yes? I asked them, "Could you please number the spots?" So that they can say, "This car is actually parked here." Give them the number. They give them the number. They go out, they get the car. But no, 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 no. You know that thing on your keys, everybody got a brand-new car? You know the panic button that you're supposed to hit when you, you're in a parking lot and somebody's gonna like attack you? Yes? They do that all day long. And when I complain, they say, "Sorry." Call the cops. And then I call the cops, and you know what the cops tell me? "Well, what do we, what do you want us to do about it?" Is that fair? They're saying that they're running this major corporation, but they can't handle their own employees. You heard them say it by themselves. Well, we can advise our employees not to park there. We can advise this, but they don't enforce anything. Does that make any sense? Does that make any sense to you guys? Because I know if I'm getting a paycheck and somebody tells me to do something, and I don't do it, I'm gonna get a pink slip. True? Yes? Another thing is, they're saying that they're not gonna come out on Old Amboy Road. They test drive cars down Old Amboy Road all day long. And, oh, and by the way, when the bigwigs go home, the guys that work in the garage, they race their cars down Old Amboy Road. Race them. They had minibikes parked down the side, and they were racing minibikes back and forth like no one even lived there, because no one enforces anything from there at all. When you guys gave them the pervious coverage to park the cars, the thing was, they couldn't have lighting back there because it would shine into the house. Now, they wanna light it up like a Christmas tree. They never said one word. They said, "Oh, they're gonna plant some bushes for us." Yeah, when they die, you know what they do? They're dead. They don't replant them. What about a fence? What about a fence? So bush, so I'm gonna sit there and look at these cars? You know, when they sat there by themselves and they didn't move, wasn't so bad, right? They're sitting there, they don't move. There's some bushes, I can't see them. But now they're gonna put a roadway behind my house. Correct? They still haven't told us where they're gonna put the garbage dumpster, which could be right behind my house for all I know, and then I'm gonna get rats. I know, they're gonna put parts in it, but people are gonna be in there eating and drinking, aren't they? Isn't there a lounge? There's gonna be recycling? They didn't address that. They just said, "Yes, we will." Well, where? Where are they doing it at? Everything is like, "Give me an exception for this, give me an exception for that," and nobody, and you know, it was, the funniest part is, if, could you please put that, that picture back up there, please? Excuse me. Can I take this with me? So when they put this picture up, isn't this nice? They put this picture up. They said nothing about these three houses, did they? They even kinda like blurred it out so you couldn't see that there was houses there from, you know, "Look, can you tell there's houses there?" Or is that like a dirt lot to you? No, I was just curious. I was just asking a question. It looks like a dirt lot to me. They have no, everything that we do, or they do, they don't care about the neighbors. And I think they kinda proved that to you guys when they said, "Well, you guys should enforce it." Should you? And please, can someone please tell me where the employee parking lot is? Could any, any of you guys? You guys are experts now. You own the place. Please, please...
Hold on, hold on.
Please tell me where the designated employee parking lot is. It's on the street.
Mr. Klausser said that when we opened the public portion, he was going to listen to the complaints, and I'm assuming you are the, one of the neighbors that live right there.
I am. So my complaint is, if they're going to...
And most of your question, most of your comments, I appreciate, and they're rhetorical, and I don't know exactly how to respond to them, other than the street enforcement would have to be taken over by the municipality. This board doesn't have that power. So council has that power, and I'm not trying to push this off, but I wanted to tell you how it works. They can't determine who parks and who doesn't park. He can force his employees to park in a lot.
But do they have a lot?
By right of his, his being, him or the managers being in charge. They can dictate that. That doesn't mean their employees are gonna listen to it. I travel that road. It's horrible.
It's horrible.
I go, I try to straddle the middle, because I never know who's coming out from the right or the left. It really should be shut off to public, for public access. It really should. But it isn't, and only the council can change that. And I would, I would, I strongly agree with you. I don't think there should be any parking on that street whatsoever. It's horrible. And I agree with you. Now, as far as the board knows that those three houses are there, yes. Can they put a fence up there? They didn't apply for that. It might be something we might want to enforce. I don't know if it's possible either by ordinance to do that. That would be something I'd have to refer to the professionals for advice on that. The key fob thing, it's annoying as hell. I live across the street from a small car lot. That's the way they find cars, morning, noon, and night. And it really is lazy.
But we are in an age...
I know.
That you could send a Tesla to the moon, but they can't number a spot, put it on the paperwork in the computer, and say, "This car is parked in spot number four, so walk to spot number four and get the car."
I agree with you, but human nature doesn't dictate that. We take the laziest and least confrontation.
But, but, but wait, the...
I'm not saying it's right.
But the, but the management hasn't even tried to unlazy the lazy.
We haven't heard from Mr. Klausser when he comes back as to these comments, and I'm sure there's going to be others.
Oh, there's gonna be. Go ahead, you can talk now.
We thank you for your comments, and we take note of each and everything you said.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
You can come up.
I have a question.
Come up first, come up first.
Those were the experts.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. They'll go through Mr. Klausser. He'll direct that as necessary. But you feel free to ask anything you want. The board attorney will swear you in, ma'am.
Yep.
Do you solemnly swear any testimony you provide before the board will be the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Kathy Miller. I live at 57 Old Amboy Road. I've lived there for 45 years, so I'm familiar with all the changes. Can I sit now?
Would you like to sit down and do this?
Because I have to read my questions.
Take a seat.
I have a lot, so...
Just make sure that the green light is on, on that micro, on either microphone that you're gonna use. And you have to, it's a directional mic?
I have pictures. I sent pictures.
Let's just take one thing at a time. Address the board, and we'll help you out.
Well, I have questions.
Well, we'll, we'll direct them the right. I have to go through Mr. Klausser for that, okay?
Okay, the other thing I do want to say, like Michelle said...
Straight, you have to talk directly into the microphone. Thank you.
I'm insulted that they never even addressed us in all their statements. It says "community impact." They don't even mention residents. That's an insult to me, right off the bat. I just want to say that. Okay, so, looking at the parking lot, the new one on Lot 4, are there gonna be any flatbeds there and wreckers? Maybe I should go back and say, "The service building, will there be a commercial bay?" In the proposed new building, will there be a commercial bay? Will there be...
When you say "commercial bay," ma'am, what are you referring to?
Commercial vehicles, flatbeds, wreckers.
Will they be fixing?
Yes.
I would assume they'll probably fix anything they have, they can fix.
I did see a sign where it said "commercial," so I want to know where they're gonna be staged. Are the commercial vehicles that they may be fixing in that service building gonna be in Lot 4? Because they also have commercial on the other side of the street. That's one, was one of the variants that they got a few years back to do commercial vehicles. So now we have flatbeds, wreckers, car carriers up and down the street all day long. So I'm just wondering if the car carriers and wreckers, if they're gonna be coming up that driveway to the service building.
Would that be car, the car carriers delivering and picking up?
Well, they're, if you have a wrecker, it's gonna have a broken-down vehicle on it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Will they be going into the service area? I'm asking them.
Well, his statement was that, that only his employees would be coming in.
Okay, so if there is a wrecker, a car's, broken-down cars on the wreckers, where are they going?
I hope Mr. Klausser's writing that down, and he'll, we'll have, we'll have to address that. That I don't know. I don't, I don't know if he considers the wrecker driver his employee.
And I want to know where the, the cars are gonna be, the cars for service, where they're gonna be test-roded, test-driven on the road, where? Okay. Also wondered, I know they said that the driveway alongside my house, that it's gonna be used for fire trucks and garbage trucks. I read that in there. So they're saying that it's gonna be an emergency.
The new, the new outlet that they want to put in, in ingress and egress?
The one that's across from the Wawa. The one that's across from the Wawa.
Okay.
Why would garbage trucks be going down there?
Where did you hear that? I, I don't know.
I read it in that 300-page proposal that they submitted.
Okay, I don't have access to that. I don't, I don't, is that-
All those PDFs, you didn't read them?
If I, if you want, Mr. Chairman, I can maybe clarify that.
I read about 300 pages.
I think the, we, in most, most development applications, we request that they provide a template showing that a trash truck can maneuver through the site and a fire truck can maneuver through the site for accessibility. And that may be what, uh, um, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, ma'am. That may be what, what Ms. Miller may be asking about. As far as the, the access goes, what, and we're, we were of the same concern that you were, that that was going to be a, a main access into the site. The applicant has clarified tonight-
It looks like, it looks like it's going to be built for, to eventually be used for a whole lot more.
Right.
And no matter what they say, believe me, they do what they want.
So anyway, that's, we did clarify just on the record that, that access is not going to be used for, for accessing the lot. It's, it's going to be redesigned to only be for emergency access only in the event that you need it.
Will it be gated then to stop?
It would be chained off.
Maybe a spring gate?
Chained or gated to keep tables.
So that the employees, if they want to go to lunch to the Wawa, they're not going to cut through there?
It should not be used.
So it will be blocked off. Okay, because we know sometimes they lock things. Like their driveways, like they say, they have driveways, but there's cars in front of them all the time, so a lot of those driveways aren't there. So if you could bring up the pictures I sent? Because that's important. I know we're going to run out of time, so.
Yeah, I, what are you talking about, pictures? You send pictures?
I sent pictures.
Well, the attorney's going to have to figure out whether we can see those.
It sounds like you're, you want to present some evidence or something along those lines or something?
Well, I have a question as to where they'll be dropped. The car carriers will be dropping off their cars because presently, all day long, there, I shouldn't say all day long, every day, there's car carriers dropping off on the street on Old Danboy Road.
I've seen that.
So I know in 1998, because I have paperwork to prove it, that they were told that the cars had to be in the new lot that's on 18. Car carriers do go in there. But a lot of your smaller car carriers that might only have 10 cars on it, your wreckers, they drop off on the street. They do it every day. And I have an email from Jason Savino because I complained, and he's, he responded, "We deal with so many carriers, the procedures are in place with them. They all have different drop-off procedures of their own. They drop off constantly throughout the day." That's true. But he's basically saying they have their own procedures. They don't listen to what Ford tells them. Sometimes they learn us via email before, sometimes after. It's not always a checked-in process with our staff. Our check guy is constantly running around doing a million things off premises, so sometime, and sometimes doing other tasks. The carriers are not his only job. So in other words, they can't control the carriers. So if they can't control them, who can? I've called the police, and the police are, you know, what? One time they went out there, I don't know if they issued a ticket. I called the second time, they told me they're busy. I called them another time, they were like, "Okay, we'll send somebody out," but you could tell they don't want to hear from me. And I don't want to be the bad guy. I shouldn't be the cop in the town.
They unload on Route 8, on Route 9 as well?
On Old Danboy Road.
No, out on the highway as well. They're not supposed to be out there.
And see, my opinion is that there should be, if there, they should be given violations for one. And the only way to stop them, they don't care about $100 ticket, a $200, a $1,000 ticket. But if you make them go to court and they're inconvenienced with their time, they might reconsider. Because, you know what, they hand the ticket over to their boss or company or whatever. It's no big deal to them. But if they're coming from Pennsylvania, coming upstate New York, and you make them come back to Old Bridge at night to go to the court, they might feel differently. I want to know how you could stop them. The police don't want to hear from me, and I don't think it should be my job, but somehow, it should be their job. When the Rosens were there, they worked with us. They owned Oasis Ford. They put a sign up, said "No trucks." Past their parking area, there was no trucks. They told their carriers to go over to the new lot. They had more control. I know now the business is so much bigger, but it's out of control, and it's dangerous. They have those car carriers there, they have tractor-trailer Dewey pile delivers there. You can't see past those. I have pictures, I have videos that, I don't know. Can I, I have a few here. I don't know what you mean by a-
I think you would be interested in, in filing an objector's case is what you would like.
I don't know what that means.
That's kind of like where we're headed with this.
Well, I do object.
This is, this is-
I'm not in favor.
Public comment and question portion, so you're basically limited to posing questions for their professionals to respond to and placing any concerns onto the record. As far as presenting evidence, if you wanted to do something like that, it would be after they concluded their primary presentation, you could present an objector's case at that point if you wanted to. But that would be, actually, that would actually take place at the conclusion of the primary case. So there's, we have, we had about two witnesses, I think, tonight, or three witnesses, I guess. It sounds like we have like three more to go. That's probably going to happen at the next meeting.
Yeah, I know.
And then once that concludes, if you wanted to put forth an objection case, that's something that you could do at that point.
Okay, so whoever can answer, how many bays do you have in the?
Mr. Chair, just on that, that issue, Ms. Miller. You know, I, I know Ms.-
Got to be on the mic, Peter, Mr. Klausser.
There's an evidentiary, evidentiary issue that's difficult for, you know, someone that just doesn't do this all the time to, to do that. Ms. Miller's trying to, I think, get in evidence that there are car carriers that deliver on Route 9. You know it, I know it. The applicant would stipulate that that occurs. We don't, we don't, and we don't endorse it. We, we give direction to carriers not to do that, but for purposes of getting it on the record. The police know it, you know it, we know it. So if that, you, I, I have no issue with that being stipulated on the record that it occurs. We'll have a response, but it's not something that, that's not where we tell them to drop off the vehicles. But I'll get that on the record from Mr. Savino. But just for purposes of maybe not making this too difficult on, on Ms. Miller, I stipulate that that's a, that's a fact.
Thank you. You understand what he's saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, you can't speak from the audience. Yep. You have to be in front of the microphone. Go ahead.
Okay, so the other thing, and I know they addressed it. I know the property that Lot 4, where they're putting the 382 parking spaces, a lot of fill went in there. My neighbor was filling way beyond what was allowed. I was, happened to be home over a five-year period. He was bringing in loads constantly. I know that they were tested, the test pits that they went down, they found debris. But has it ever been tested for contamination? But you don't have a result? Because what I read in their report is that they did not test for contamination. That's, that's what's in-
Might I suggest this, rather than have a back and forth, present your, present what you want on the record. We'll hold him to the, feet to the fire next time to answer those questions. I don't know that he has the results, but he might be able to produce.
Well, I don't know if they did it afterwards, but I do know-
Right, I don't either, so.
In the presentation, it said that it was not tested for contamination.
I believe Mr. Klausser wrote it down.
And then I had pictures that showed the, where our water drains into their area. Their service, the new service building, right now, there is a parking area. And it's elevated three feet above the ground level below it, which is behind our property. They want to put the roadway in there that's curved. They did mention some inlets to go in there. But there was always natural runoff, the little dry streams that went down to the, the big stream. Uh, I'm wondering if that roadway is not going to block off the natural runoff. We got a lot of rain this past week with more coming, and there's water laying there right now.
You're 57, right?
Yeah.
Would you be to the bottom, to the top, or in the middle?
The end.
To the top? Going towards Wawa?
Yeah, right across from Wawa.
Okay.
And believe me, I have to deal with a lot between their vehicles and Wawa. I mean, it's crazy there.
This is the time-
Go to the microphone.
This is the time to express your feelings. Present him with questions that you have, concerns. And now, he'll come back, and he'll provide answers.
I have three pages of questions. I don't know if you want me to. And I'm doing it out of order. Some of you used answered. And then I have a summary statement that I just wanted to-
Why don't you highlight the points? Highlight the points, the questions that you have on the next two pages, and then do your summary statement. I'm keeping notes. So is the board attorney.
Okay, they couldn't answer how many trips back and forth, but I think I read somewhere that they have 30 service bays in the existing building. And then they wanted to add 20 more, 21 more bays to the new building. That's 50, if it's true, that's 50 bays of service. So one of my questions, which they can't answer, is exactly how many trips back and forth between the two services are cars going to be going that they're, that's going to be valeted back and forth? And I think that's dangerous, especially with the existing conditions today between the car carriers, the delivery, parts delivery, there's tractor-trailers. So you, you can't see those driveways. I almost hit somebody the first time I went over and complained to the dealership. A car was coming and out of the driveway. They had a delivery truck and a tractor-trailer there. I did not see him come out of the driveway. He did not see me coming. I stopped this close from hitting his car. Well, it was a truck, actually, a, you know, one of the smaller trucks. And it's like, there are people coming out there all the time. And if they're going to have their deliveries in, along the street, they're not going to be able to see. And you're not going to be able to stop. Their parts delivery, I don't know what Dewey pile delivers. There's all sorts of things. And you have a dealership that, there's all kinds of deliveries. So they can't drive into any of their driveways to deliver whatever it is they're delivering. They park on Old Danboy Road on this side, and all your employee parking is on this side. Two cars cannot go side by side. There's a queue there. You have to go around. I have tons of pictures that could show what we all deal with every day. And it's dangerous. And I think them go, I, I can't believe that they would, to me, it's ludicrous that they could, would consider that it's those back and forth is safe in any way. It's impossible. If they have that amount of bays and that much service that requires 382 parking space, that's a lot of business. And to me, that's a lot of back and forth. And I can't see how it could happen safely on any given day.
I think what he said was 100 per day they take in.
100 per day?
For service. That's my recollection.
That's dangerous. That is absolutely dangerous and ludicrous.
Well, I don't know about them crossing the road. They do 100 service calls a day is, is the way I interpret.
Okay, but we don't know how many trips back and forth because some of them are waiting for parts. I get that. I don't care if it's 50. It could be 25 back and forth. It's dangerous. And I know because I drive it every day. And I've lived there for 45 years. I know what's going on. And I know that they promise to do one thing, and they do whatever they want. Their employees, when they're coming to work in the morning, they're speeding. They're not doing 25. I don't expect them to do 25. They're not doing 35. They're doing 40, 45. They all come down in a row, one after the other, and they just park one after the other in that, there's 50 cars that fit there. And then the ones that park diagonally, you could add another six more that are blocking their driveways. And that's a daily thing. And then when they're leaving, when they go to Wawa for lunch, there's a couple of them there. They have the Chargers and the Mustangs. And they race back to work. They rev their engines, you know, all the flatbeds. They go, the flatbeds and the wreckers go to the Wawa to gas up. I guess they're new cars. They go there to gas. And then when they're coming back, they all shift right in front of my house. And when the tractor-trailers are coming or the big vehicles, they have to brake right in front of my house. It's very noisy. Their lighting in the main building, it was supposed to be shut off at 11 o'clock. That was agreement that was made years ago. That, those lights are not shut off all night long. They're not dimmed. And I believe that they're supposed to be turned down at 11 o'clock. The only thing they were allowed to do is to have security lights. Well, I guess they, they think that their entire parking lot needs security lights. And what they told me the one time when I asked them about shutting off the lights, they said the police told them to leave it on because they have too many thefts. And they say, "We do whatever the town tells us." So I think they're taking the direction from the police now? Or do they take their direction from whatever you, the zoning board, what you decide, your conditions, right? And you give the conditions, and they totally ignore them. They do whatever they want.
We haven't given them anything yet.
I'm not giving them anything.
I said, "We haven't given them anything yet."
No, I'm talking about past conditions. And I have a lot of-
I know you have some more bullet points you want to put on the record.
More, more questions. Okay, let me see if I could find.
And then you're going to read a summary, right? A statement you wanted to make?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, if we're going to be allowed the next time, I could ask questions the next time.
There will be a public portion, absolutely.
Okay, I just didn't want to lose that because I know it's getting late.
Well, I want you to be comfortable, too. How, how long's the statement?
Well, you know what, now, because I, I didn't do them in, in a row, I'd like to reorganize, and the next time I'll do it. Because some of it was covered.
Okay, anytime there's testimony, and there's going to be, what do we have, three more witnesses, I believe? There's a public portion, just like there is tonight.
Okay, this is just a summary of, of my feelings.
Go ahead.
And it's easier for me to read, and it's a page and a half long. Okay, "I lived on Old Danboy for just over 45 years. I am retired and enjoy being out in my yard as much as I can. When I moved here in 1978, there were nine residential homes in the Elks Club. Being situated in the middle of Old Danboy Road, we were mostly surrounded by woods. At that time, the zoning was OG-1. There were no fences. We visited one another in our backyards. Two cars could not fit side by side coming down the road where the dealership is located today. When the Rosens wanted to expand Oasis Ford, they had the road widened. We enjoyed the addition of city water, sewage, and a paved road. It was a joy to come home from, from work to peace and quiet with the nature around us. At first, the changes that came were welcomed improvements to our quality of life. Now, with what some would consider progress for the town, our surroundings are deteriorating. The Zimmerman's, who lived on the corner of Spring Valley and Old Danboy, felt forced out of their home by the influx of car carriers, always coming and going and staging in front of their house. Although provisions were made for the car carriers to unload in the new lot on Spring Valley, more and more the car, the carriers were unloading on the street as they still do today, even though there's a town ordinance states it's forbidden. Along with the dealership changing hands and the additions to the showrooms and the service bays, the congestion on the lower end of Old Danboy is at times dangerous to come through." Workers walk through the parked cars. Delivery trucks and smaller car carriers block the view of the driveways." And then I wrote about almost hitting the car, so I'll bypass that. "Our quiet little street is now speeding cars, trucks of all sizes, including tractor-trailers, clamoring car carriers, loud flatbeds, wreckers, and cars with very loud mufflers. With the Wawa driveway very close, I have the extra noise of tractor-trailers breaking right in front of my house to enter the Wawa, and the noise of large trucks and flatbeds shifting gears as they leave the Wawa as well. At times, the large vehicles just park on Old Danboy in the no parking zone." That's the other thing. These, and it's a lot of the vehicles leaving the dealership, those delivery vehicles, they stop where it's no parking, and then they go in and get coffee. They park right across from me. And again, this has not, "The Wawa refrigerator trucks are staged right across from me. The compressors are very loud. The banging of the garbage containers when they are being picked up and dropped sound like cherry bombs going off. There's always garbage in the streets and in our yards. My bedroom is lit up all night by the lots from the Wawa and the dealership parking lot. The dealer was supposed to cut the lights, I believe that it was 11 o'clock. Now, with the pros, with this proposal, all the frustration and aggravation will be brought to our backyards and my side yard as well. Is it the dealership's intention to force us out of our homes for their own gain and our loss?" And then I asked about with the 50 service bays requiring 382 parking spaces to store the cars waiting for service. It's my opinion that it's ludicrous to think that the dealership can have cross-traffic between the service building and the main building and not interfere with public traffic. Old Danboy is a public road and not the dealership's right-of-way. It's my hope that zoning will carefully consider public safety, the residents, including the residents at the apartments' well-being, our quality of life, and what will happen to our property values. I hate to imagine what a nightmare Old Danboy could become should this proposal go through. Thank you."
We thank you for your comments tonight. They've all been noted. I certainly invite you back to the next.
Yeah, I'll reorganize my questions. I'm sure I have a few.
That's, that's fine. We're going to give you a date tonight when it's going to happen because there's probably not, there's not a renotice. So, I'm going to give you a date tonight when we're going to have this on the schedule.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I have questions about the inlets and some technical things that.
If you're looking to create an objector's case, I'd have, I think you should look into that and do that and try and get some.
And let me know about the pictures.
I would, well, I would try and get some legal advice, even if you could probably find someone that you might not have to pay for legal advice. But if you want to start an objector's case, they would be the ones to tell you.
Well, I, well, I guess you all, I guess you all believe me, the congestion down there with the, them unloading their carriers. I have.
I'm fairly certain that everybody on this board is aware of that street.
And probably seen it. Because I could show you picture after picture after. And it's dangerous because the guys taking the cars off, they have to get out of their vehicle. They get in the street. They got to go and unstrap things. They have to pull down the things. It is, it's a very dangerous situation. And I don't think that the dealership cares about the public or their employees.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight.
Or the residents. They totally, that, their whole thing barely mentions that residents are there and the impact on, it's all the other impact, but not the residents.
All right, Ms. Miller.
So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Only because you were up once, I want to see the, is anyone else here in the room? Want to be heard? Okay, you didn't get a chance, so come on, I'm going to take you. Once again, a board attorney will swear you in, sir.
Hi, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear any testimony you provide before the board will be the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Your name, sir, for the record?
Robert Ferraro.
Do you spell the last name?
You're going to have to lift the microphone. You're not going to be picked up.
F. Z. Frank, E. R. R. A. R. O.
And your address, please?
Forty-one, forty, 49 Old Danboy Road.
Thank you.
I'm the, the house on the southern part of the first one.
I didn't catch your first name, sir.
Bob Ferraro. Robert Ferraro.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to back up what Kathy and Michelle said. I've witnessed it all. I've been an owner of the house since 1988. And what they're saying is true. That's all I have to say. I've witnessed it.
Thank you for your comments, sir. We invite you back to the next meeting. Ms. Herr.
I just have one question for you guys.
Okay.
When I said something about the township putting up no parking signs.
Hold on one second.
It's okay. I'm used to it. I've been this guy in my life.
Go ahead.
Um, when you, when I asked you about the no parking sign, you said it wasn't within your.
The board doesn't, this board doesn't have the power to do that. Only the council can enact.
How do I get something in front of the council? And if it is in front of the council, would that hold this up? Or?
One is independent of the other. That has, their ruling on an ordinance for parking has nothing to do with this board.
Well, would it be, would the board consider it? That they're, I'm trying to get them to put an ordinance for no parking, and there's no parking spaces for employees? And if they take them off the road, now what are you going to do? How are they going to resolve that issue?
I would, I would honestly say, no, we wouldn't hold up a decision based solely upon that. I don't think we legally could. And I'm taking advice from attorneys, so.
Could you guide me in the right direction where I could fill that application out and have that heard and get a lawyer for it, please?
Well, you could, you can certainly write or talk to your local council person, whatever ward you're in.
Okay.
And, and/or.
Could you guide me?
And/or you could talk to any of the council people at large.
Okay.
Or I would direct my complaint to the mayor's office as well.
Okay.
And that would have to be initiated by the council to create an ordinance if they want to change restrictions on that roadway because that's a municipal road.
Okay, so I would approach my local councilman first or any council, talk, call the mayor's office.
Certainly.
And that would be where I would start.
The police are probably not going to, the problem is the police are going to say, "There is no ordinance for us to enforce."
Correct, so that's where my, that is my starting point.
Right, right.
To alleviate.
That's correct.
That particular problem, which is probably going to create another problem because now they're going to have to park somewhere else and whatever.
Who knows? Maybe, maybe the owner who's sitting there will make it the responsibility of his deliveries to deliver onto Old Danboy Road and their big parking lot on Route 9, rather than accept deliveries anywhere else. But I can't make that decision.
I was talking about, I was more or less talking about the.
Parking?
The parking.
Well, I'm just saying, we could try a couple of things. Maybe, maybe he'll only accept deliveries somewhere else. And maybe that the parking will improve, and perhaps the council would prohibit parking on the street. I don't know that. I'm just merely suggesting to you.
Okay, so, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you, guys.
All right, I'm going to close the public portion at this time. Mr. Klausert. We're going to get a new date?
Yeah, when are we going to?
June 6.
June 6?
June 6?
Yes.
What happened to March 21st? I'm sorry. Okay, when we, I turn into a pumpkin under the contract. I know that's not your problem, but in May. So, when we, I talked about having this meeting tonight. We carried it from the last hearing at the request of your staff, which was a good thing so that we could go and meet with them. So, I'm not complaining about that. But with the idea that I thought that the 21st was also earmarked. But if you're telling me June 6th, I start to, my contract, I have to close by May on Lot 4, which again is not your problem, but I'm just putting that out there as an issue. I really don't know how to resolve as I sit here right now. But June 6th is the next available day. That's it.
I don't set the calendar. You know that, so.
Okay.
Is there an opportunity to get it any earlier or no? Okay.
I'll have to deal with it somehow. Okay.
Yeah. For those here in the audience, the, from the public that testified, please note, June 6th will be the next meeting for this particular application, okay? There's not, you're not going to receive further notice. So, please mark it down in your calendars. Please check the township website if you ever have doubt. Go to Old Bridge Township Zoning Board. When you look that up, you'll see the zoning board members, and you'll see agendas, you'll see dates. You can punch on any, on any one of those. It'll fill you in on what's going on that evening, okay? So, you can double-check. But for now, this, this matter, 50-2023Z, will be continued June 6th, no further notice.